Stay tuned for a meeting of the Calabasas City Council. The meeting will be broadcast using Zoom and the city CTV Channel 3. Members of the city council may teleconference into the meeting without noticing or posting an agenda at their teleconference location. Besides the live TV and Zoom broadcast, the live stream of the meeting may be viewed online at cityofcalabasas.com/CTVlive. If you want to provide public comment, press raise hand if you're using Zoom or star nine if you're joining by phone. Just unmute yourself by pressing star six. Say your name and the city you live in. You'll be allowed three minutes to address the city council regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. If the power or internet goes out lasting more than 15 minutes, or if there's some event that prevents the council from meeting or prevents you from providing public comment, then the meeting will be adjourned. Any items noticed as public hearings will be rescheduled to the next regular meeting of the city council. Any other agenda items the council has not taken action on will be placed on a future agenda. Now, a meeting of the Calabasas City Council.
Good evening and welcome to the February 16th, 2022, City of Calabasas Special Meeting. This evening, I'm joined by Mayor Protem David Shapiro and council members Kraut, Bazajin, and Weintraub. The pledge of allegiance this evening will be led by Charlotte Meyer.
Good evening. Please stand with your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Maybe we'll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Bazajin.
Aye.
Councilmember Kraut.
Aye.
Councilmember Weintraub.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Shapiro.
Yes.
Mayor Maurer. I got that.
Sorry, David. All right, so let's go on to council announcements. Mayor Protem Shapiro.
Let's try it again. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Just want to say I hope everyone had a wonderful Valentine's Day weekend and very good news, and we hope it continues on the number, the front of COVID numbers going down on a weekly and hopefully a daily basis soon. So in the meantime, keep your eyes open to the city's website, which will have all the most recent information. And last but not least, I think the city helped it happen, but our very own Los Angeles Rams won the Super Bowl last weekend. So when we say whose house, it's our house, it's their house, it's Calabasas' house. But congrats to all the Rams, their families, friends, and local supporters.
Councilmember Bazajin.
No announcements, thank you.
Councilmember Kraut.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
And Councilmember Weintraub.
I just want to congratulate Mayor Protem Shapiro on his reelection as our SCAGS Regional Council District Representative. He is representing the whole, the council district number 44, and I guess he can tell everyone what that exactly means. But congratulations on your reelection.
Did you want to take a minute to just tell everyone what it is this means, this special appointment?
Thank you, thanks very much. It is, the COG region, as you know, is Westlake, Agri Hills, Hidden Hills, Malibu, and Calabasas. So I represent all of our interests on the Regional Council for SCAG, the Southern California Association of Governments, and I have another two-year term to complete now as a representative. And we deal with issues such as housing, infrastructure, transportation, environmental issues, and so much more. But we are aligned with our, our issues and our wishes and our support. Even today, there was testimony to help our city and the region as well. Thank you.
Thank you for your service and that extra time you put into serving on this gag. I just have one announcement. I work in Ventura County. Today was the first day that those of us that are vaccinated did not have to wear a mask indoors, outdoors, in the workplace where I work. And it was an incredible experience that really stunned all of us to, to look at each other and see complete faces. There are, you know, upwards of 100 young firefighters whose I've only seen their eyes. It was a, it was really a unique awkward, but, but satisfying moment. So I'm looking forward to the same here in LA County. All right, let's move on to oral communication, public comment. Are there members of the public wishing to speak, Madam Clerk?
You're on mute, Mari.
Apologies. We have several people with their hands up. We want to confirm that they're speaking on regular public comment and on the agenda item, which is agenda item number one. If you're speaking on item one, please lower your hand. If you're speaking on general public comment, keep your hand up. Okay, so it appears we have two public comments. Christina Walsh and followed by Michael Brockman.
Yes, hello, thank you. My name is Christina Walsh, and I am speaking to you on behalf of myself and Tricia O'Connell. We are local artists, and we thank you for the opportunity to present this idea to you tonight. We have been collaborating on a large cultural mural in, in the local area, and we come from different artistic backgrounds. And as a result, we've, we've come to look at public art in a new, very different way. I am a proud recipient of the Carl Gibbs Environmental Excellence Award from many, many moons ago, and Tricia's attention to nature has been clear throughout her career. The LA Department of Transportation has a program where one can paint traffic control boxes. And we would like to propose an idea to paint 10 of the Calabasas traffic control boxes with the theme of "The World is Beautiful" or "Calabasas is Beautiful," emphasizing nature, butterflies, pollination, hummingbirds. And we have proposed examples that we would like to submit for your consideration. Tricia is also here with me as well, so she is listening. If you wish to ask us any questions. We have done some of these control boxes. You know, there are hundreds of them throughout the city of Los Angeles, and there's a big kind of gap here. So we were thinking over the overpass of the on-ramp at, at Valley Circle. There are several there in both the eastbound and westbound directions, as well as along Calabasas Road where the Commons is located. So they intending to be inspiring and, and unifying in, in a place of community pride that has always been apparent when I get to visit the only bookstore in town, which is in Calabasas. So I look forward to experiencing what you did, where, where we can enjoy living a little more like we used to. So this is intended to be a proposal for beautification, and I look forward to your consideration and questions and would like permission to submit examples of our work, proposed work for you to look at. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina and Tricia. We are not able in the public comment setting to have a dialogue. I would suggest that you submit materials and your proposal to our city clerk and drop it off at the city tomorrow, Mari Sela Hernandez, or you could mail it in. Thank you. Um, I also, Mari, is there someone else? And we, could you start the clock when I begin?
Yeah, Michael Brockman. He had his phrase. And I'm losing, we bring him in.
Nobody, it appears he lowered his hand.
Okay, all right. He, I'm not more guessing, will speak on the next item. Any other members?
I'm sorry. He's back. Let me bring you.
Yes, Michael Brockman is back again, Madam Mayor.
Oh, okay.
Michael, please go ahead, state your names. You and unmute yourself, please. Michael, please unmute and begin speaking. There you go.
Okay, I'm, I am want to speak on the item you're dealing with tonight. So I think I'm in the wrong place. So I will wait until it's the appropriate time for me to speak. Thank you.
Okay, and that will be momentarily. You'll have an advantage of seeing the staff's presentation, and you might consider adding more to your comments. So it's a good idea to wait. Um, all right, so we are now going to continue business. This is our one and only item tonight on our special meeting. This is the 2022-2023 Strategic Priorities and Work Plan. I'd like to ask if there are members of the audience that wish to speak on this item, to raise your hand. And I'd ask our city clerk to start moving people in so that we can segue right to the audience comments after the presentation. And with that, I'd like to hand it over to our city manager, Kiman Meek, and Michael McConville.
Thank you, Mayor, for that introduction, and thank you, council members, for taking the time tonight for a special meeting, an extra meeting this month as we continue to work on the strategic priorities and our work plan. I also want to acknowledge the attendance of a number of our commissioners, our advisory boards, and quite a few residents from our community that are here tonight. So we appreciate those of you who've joined in with your interest and your, your comments. Council, as, as we've discussed before, this is an initial process, almost, almost as if it's a pilot program for us. This is new as we're working together to put together this work plan. And as we've mentioned in, in previous meetings, this is the council's work plan. What we want you to feel comfortable with is that the process is going the way you want it to go and that there's the appropriate dialogue and, and input from the council members to us, that we can continue to move this forward in a way that's positive for each of you. What we'll do tonight is we have a couple of things that we'll do is we first want to provide or go through a presentation. Michael will do that, that will give some background and overview. As those of you who've joined in in the past have seen some of these slides or some of this information, but it will create a wonderful backdrop to what we need to do next, which is after we've had the opportunity to, to discuss the, the process, we'll also then solicit comment from the public. Mayor, you've mentioned that of either their support for items that have projects and initiatives that have already been identified. We also know just based on emails that have come in that members of the public or commissioners, residents have also submitted some different ideas. And so following the public comment, we'll go through each of the different priorities, the six strategic priorities that we've identified. And we'll take time there to amend, and we can add or, or, you know, remove any of the items. And then it'll also be an opportunity for the council to have some dialogue and to deliberate on these. Up to this point, we, council has provided their ideas, their list of projects or initiatives, but there has not been a lot of opportunity for dialogue and clarification. So we'll do that. And then finally, at the end of the meeting, we'll take some time to prioritize and select five from each category to move on to that next round of input and engagement, community engagement on that. So with that, I'll turn the time over to Michael, and we'll repeat the, again, kind of the process after we're done with the, the slide presentation.
Okay, thank you for the introduction, Kinden, and good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. So for tonight's agenda, again, we're going to be going over the strategic planning process due to the new attendees we have on this meeting. We'll talk about some of its benefits, what we hope to accomplish, and again, get into an overview of the process. Then we will provide a current overview of where we're at for the fiscal year 2223 strategic plan and talk about outstanding steps. And finally, we'll, we'll end on a workshop where, as Kinden mentioned, we will hope to have the city council refine the current list from 87 down to no more than 30. So, so thinking about what strategic planning is, I, I think this is a pretty good description, listen on this page. It's really a systematic process which identifies and directs goal setting and resource allocation by identifying what an agency is, what it does, and why. And, and more specifically, you can think of it as being able to determine, where is the city now, where do we want to be, and what steps do we need to take to get there or, or close that gap? And some of the primary steps in the strategic planning process are to develop a clear understanding of the city's mission and vision, to identify key strategies, goals, and objectives that are essential to the city's success, and then finally, to create a plan for implementation, resource allocation, and performance measurement. The ending result then is the development of a strategic plan or, or in our case, a work plan, which serves as a blueprint for how the city will achieve its mission and vision. Again, getting back to bridging up the gap. So one of the benefits of the strategic planning process is that it increases operational efficiency and effectiveness. And, and this occurs by allocating city resources in accordance with very specific defined goals and financial parameters and performer, performance measurement. It also improves public communications. So because staff, residents, and council are all involved, expectations are clearly aligned amongst all of the stakeholders in the community. And then finally, it's adaptable in that the performance measurement that occurs, as well as the goal alignment, allow the city to be proactive to changing environments, whether that's demographic, public health, or regulatory, for example. Something to, to note as it relates, and Kinden touched on this, for the expectations of the 2223 strategic plan, this is, is a pilot plan and a trial and, and will evolve as we kind of fit the processes to the city's unique needs. It's also condensed due to the fact that it, it started later and actually will end sooner than future strategic planning process, processes that will occur over the course of two years. So understanding now again about what, what a strategic plan is, very briefly, I'd like to talk about the process. So these are the primary tenants or components of the, the strategic planning process. First, at the top here, you'll notice we start with a mission statement. So the city defines what is the purpose of our organization? Why, what, why do we exist? Once we're able to determine that, we then can set a vision statement, which is our desired focus for the future of the city, or again, our desired way of, of closing the gap. Once we are able to have a vision, then we can get into strategic priorities, which really are policy and strategy frameworks, which act as pathways to the step below, which are projects and initiatives. So these projects and initiatives are very specific actions to achieve the city's goals, and more specifically, those in the vision statement. Once then, we have the projects and initiatives, we develop a work plan, which is an implementation outline and as well as a resource outline. And so I, I hope it can be seen that what the strategic planning process does is really take, you know, a broad statement or broad under comprehensive understanding of why the city exists and what its purpose is, and it translates it into very specific actions that allow us to carry it out. Again, what this process does is close the gap. So I'll go over the components of the process and where we stand now. And, and the first of those was the creation of the mission and the vision statements for the 2223 plan. It should be noted, because of the condensed timeframe, we simply utilize language from the general plan and didn't go through the typical processes in order to have these organically created. That being said, the, the mission statement, as we will be using moving forward, again, it's a, it's a broad statement of what, what the city's purpose is, why do we exist? And, and we'll be using the following: "To maintain the community characteristics and quality of life that make Calabasas a desirable place for our residents and businesses." Understanding what our purpose is, our mission, that allows us to declare our vision, which again is describing the city in the future, how we will achieve our mission. That, again, taken from, from the general plan for interim purposes, is that Calabasas will preserve both its character and natural resources and will lead on addressing the critical environmental, social, health, safety, and economic issues that impact our community. Once, now selecting the strategic priorities, these can be thought of as policy and strategy areas again to focus and guide and align the city decision-making. So again, these can be thought of pathways for the projects and initiatives to frame that will achieve the city's vision. The six strategic priorities here are, were selected by the city council during the last few meetings. What you see here, there's this beautiful infographics were performed by the Communications Department, so we thank them for that. And very quickly, I'll, I'll go over the six strategic priorities, or again, strategy and, and policy areas of focus that will be used for our 2223 strategic plan. First is environmental leadership. Next is field skill resiliency. Third is public safety and emergency preparedness. Fourth is recreation, youth, and senior services. Fifth is organizational excellence. And the final sixth is development and infrastructure. Understanding that we have these six strategic priorities, we are now at the process currently of composing our projects and initiatives. I, I won't spend too much time on it right now on this slide because this is going to take up the majority of our time of tonight's workshop. But I will state that, again, these are simply actions that allow the city to accomplish its goals and more specifically, the vision that we wish to carry out. They follow the, the SMART framework in that they're specific, they're measurable, they're attainable, they're relevant, and they're time-bound. Once we, the city council and, and the city is able to finalize its specific projects and initiatives, we will then draft a work plan, which is simply an outline used to execute approved projects and initiatives. So, so again, these will involve implementation steps, department objectives, timelines, responsible parties, costs, and performance measurement. As it relates to the fiscal year 2022-23 planned timeline and next steps, here is, is the past, current, and future processes that we'll need to complete. We are currently at the, the red dot, but I'll go ahead and start from the beginning. So this past January, the city council selected the strategic priorities that were presented just a few slides ago. In February, we're currently in the process of the city council members providing a listing of projects and initiatives and hopefully approving a draft form of 30, that would be tonight. After tonight's meeting, or the conclusion of the approval of draft projects and initiatives, we'll have the city council, sorry, excuse me, city commissions and advisory boards review projects and initiatives to provide their input. In April, city council will then review commission recommendations and approve final projects and initiatives. And then finally, in May, early May, the city council will adopt the final work plan, which will happen concurrently as we start the budget process. So understanding, again, the, the strategic planning process and where we're at now, the purpose of tonight's meeting and, and really the goal of tonight's meetings or tonight's workshop is to refine the draft projects and initiatives lists to no more than five per strategic priority category, or 30 projects in total. Some considerations for the city council is that staff is seeking projects and initiative recommendations that are significant and that also fall outside the day-to-day operations, right? These should be challenging to, to our staff and, and also in some ways aspirational. We would like them to be specific and measurable. So, and as well, we'd like them to be achieved within the, the 2223 fiscal year timeframe. Another note is that city council may add additional projects not listed in the draft list, or, or for that matter, remove projects if they like. And then finally, we do encourage clarification in the session amongst the council members. So, so that concludes, again, the overview and, and where we're at and where we hope to be in tonight's workshop from my end. I'm happy to take questions after the public commentary.
Michael?
Yes?
Could you kindly go over all of the draft projects and the initiatives? Section?
Yes, yes, I can.
Okay, we'll take a minute because I think it would benefit the public and if we did a quick review before we began our discussions, and then it would, I think, prepare people better for their, their input, which I just wanted to mention that the timeline that was presented this evening about the process, each step of the way includes public input. And you, you're, you're, you'll be experiencing this this evening. There were other opportunities earlier in a couple meetings, and this will just continue as we hone in on what exactly are the up to five programs identified.
Can you see this well enough, Madam Mayor?
Yes, it looks great. If there's a way to full screen it, just because the type is small, as big as you can, and... This, and this does not include the tool that you used once where there are automatic tallies as council weighs in on the topics?
This, that kind of interactive portion will be occurring during the workshop, but that, and that's will be an Excel spreadsheet. This is just, if you're looking for me to detail the projects and initiatives.
So the, our initials on the columns on the right, there, there, are you tallying as we go, or it will pop up, or no? If not, I was going to say.
Yes, yes, we will, but we, we won't be tallying just yet.
Okay, so you can lose that off the screen then, right? And you can make it even larger. Perfect. There we go, that's good.
Okay, so, so we'll first, our first strategic priority area is environmental leadership. But before I get into that, you, you will see that we have some struck out projects, initiatives. This was either stricken out, struck out, excuse me if I'm incorrect in language, but was, was crossed out due to council member revoking it or it being combined with another item. But, but nonetheless, it is, will exist and continue to exist until we really start finalizing and, and refining this list. So I'll, I'll go ahead and, and not mention these and get into the ones that.
Actually, Michael, can you explain to the public why they were removed? In the case of these two, they're underway, right?
Sure, yeah, so as it relates to the use of rodenticides, that was removed because that is, correct me if I'm wrong, Matt, the city does not have the authority to regulate the use of rodenticides in the city.
The one clarification there is the city has very limited authority under state law to regulate rodenticide use on private property. The city does, however, have the power to prohibit its own use of rodenticide on its own property and by any landscaper or other service provider using city money. And the second part of that is already underway as to the city's properties. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. So moving on to the, the second item, the prohibition on the use of gas leaf blowers. We just, this, the council member that brought that forward decided to simply coincide with the state restrictions on gas leaf blowers that will cease sale of those items in, in by 2024, I believe. Moving on to item number three, this is the identification of potential real property acquisitions for the purpose of future parkland or open space designation. Item number four is to increase smoking prohibition enforcement near Los Verdes Creek. Item five is to update Calabasas Municipal Code 17.34 to either current lead or Calabasas. to either current LEED or California Green Building Code standards. Item six is to educate residents of the state's new food waste requirements through informational campaigns and to work with waste management to coordinate waste programs for residents. Item seven is to hire a consultant to coordinate the development of a climate action plan. Next is to update and implement a green procurement policy for all city operations. Item number nine was simply combined with item number ten. And this is to develop a water resilience plan outlining strategies to increase the city's drought preparedness, local water self-reliance, and planting of native vegetation, including milkweed for monarch butterfly habitats. Item number eleven is to review single-use plastic carryout bag prohibition related to the distribution and sale of compostable bags. Item number twelve is to increase education enforcement of residential trash container rules and requirements. Any any questions or clarification that you'd like on the the first strategic priority, Madam Mayor?
No, I think we're just gonna go through these quickly like you've done.
And Michael, do you want me to handle the next one, fiscal resiliency, and then we'll switch again after that?
Sure.
A council, a second one, fiscal resiliency. So item number thirteen is establish a deferred maintenance accounts, including a policy to adequately fund during the annual budget process. Fourteen is to conduct a fee study associated with all new development and commercial construction. Next on the list is hire an employee to seek right and administer grants. Number sixteen, create an economic development plan to attract businesses, fill vacant properties, and promote advantages of conducting businesses in our business in Calabasas. Number seventeen, develop and promote a no-fee business directory. Eighteen, create a plan to address the Cowper's unfunded liability. Number nineteen, create a plan to address the OPEB liabilities, which are the other post-employment benefit liabilities or retiree medical benefit, a retiree medical health liabilities. And then number twenty on that or the final one under fiscal resiliency is create a general fund reserve policy.
Okay, so for public safety, emergency preparedness, item number twenty-one, this is to hire a consultant to advise on the development of a citywide fiber optic network. Item number twenty-two was to provide reliable cell coverage in all areas of Calabasas. This was combined with number twenty-eight, which we'll get to in just a bit. Item number twenty-three is to require a formal response to all questions submitted to SCE regarding infrastructure failures. Item twenty-four is to consolidate alerts, Blackboard Alert LA County, Nixal, Calabasas City Notification, SCE, et cetera, to better publicize signups and outreach during emergency events. Twenty-five is to develop a plan to address street racing concerns. Twenty-six is to review additional sites for flock system implementations. This item will was redacted because it will be provided as an option within twenty-five. Twenty-seven is to evaluate options to counter open space trail break-ins, including effective community outreach. Twenty-eight is to conduct a feasibility study regarding the stationing of cell towers and publicly owned sites to expand coverage areas. Twenty-nine is to evaluate additional options and partnerships to continue supporting mental health needs and homelessness. Thirty is to conduct an informational campaign with private property owners and shopping centers to advise of rights and responsibilities related to homelessness. Thirty-one was rescinded because it was combined with twenty-fourth. Thirty-two is to provide an update to the city council on the development of evacuation zones. Thirty-three is to evaluate sites in the city that can store generators or be used as charging stations during emergencies. Thirty-four is to request recommendations for emergency equipment and resources from LA County Fire and Sheriff. Thirty-five is to develop a city readiness and education initiative for earthquake and fire emergencies. Thirty-six is to hire an emergency management. And this was rescinded because it's in process and as the recruitment started on February seventh. Thirty-seven is to create a home hardening outreach program and consider supporting additional fire safe councils. Thirty-eight is to review Los Angeles Sheriff's Department Services and consider opportunities to realign funding and services. Thirty-nine, fire safety was rescinded because that was combined with thirty-two and thirty-seven. Number forty again was rescinded because it was combined with item number thirty. Last two here, forty-one, to coordinate with HOAs to develop the development of neighborhood watch programs. And then for forty-two, it's to develop an expenditure plan for Woolsey file, Woolsey Fire Settlement Funds. Excuse me.
Kindred, are you gonna take recreation, youth, and senior services?
Yes, I'll do that one if that's okay, Mayor. Recreation and youth and senior services, starting with item number forty-three on the list, is to reopen the Agora Hills Calabasas Community Center. Number forty-four, increase promotion of library services and consider expanding program staffing and hours. Number forty-five, add a shade structure to the senior center. Forty-six, conduct the feasibility study of adding basketball courts, soccer fields, or skate parks to improve recreation programs and opportunities for teenagers. Number forty-seven, improve bicycle access through Calabasas and develop events for families surrounding our trails and biking and explore partnership with the Ciclovia and become a designated bicycle-friendly community. Number forty-eight was combined with forty-six, so you see that it's shows as a strike through there. Number forty-nine, provide update on the current homebound mill delivery program to consider form and consider formal support. Number fifty, develop an annual Calabasas run. Fifty-one, reevaluate and enhance the city's calendar of of events. Fifty-two, conduct a best use analysis for Creekside Park. Fifty-three, upgrade playground equipment, trails, and pathways at city parks. Number fifty-four, complete a full and permanent buildout of Wild Walnut Park to include a dog and children's park. Number fifty-five was rescinded, and that was performed through the mayor's youth council. Fifty-six also with the idea that each mayor will coordinate as desired with the mayor's youth council. Fifty-seven, regularly schedule senior center membership drives for residents. Fifty-eight was combined with sixty-one. Fifty-nine was combined with three that was under environmental leadership. And number sixty, expand the scope of the mayor's youth council and facilitate connections with similar youth groups. Number sixty-one, create more intergenerational programs and events, assess programs and services to include all socioeconomic and demographic groups. Number sixty-two, consider holding an annual Relay for Life event. And number sixty-three, review the mass and houses, facilities and recreation programming, and identify a plan to improve and expand Headwaters Corner.
Great. And then organizational excellence.
So item number sixty-four is to hire a lobbyist to provide summaries of legislation relevant to Calabasas. Sixty-five is to better utilize commissioner expertise and seek earlier involvement in project research and recommendation processes. Better integrate members within the city and community and hold more regular commission meetings. Item number sixty-six is to create a separate education commission to act as a liaison with schools. Sixty-seven was redacted because it was combined with item sixty-five on the commissions. Sixty-eight is to review the city's electronic presence by improving website navigation and the Calabasas Connect app. We would like to simplify the resident inquiry process and reduce staff response times. Sixty-nine is to develop a system to ensure resident emails are addressed. Again, that was combined with the sixty-eighth, the one prior. Number seventy is to create equity and staff participation in in the Cowper's retirement system. Seventy-one is to assess and restructure the city's staffing needs. Seventy-two is to establish a more efficient system of maintaining city records and archives. Seventy-three is to foster better relations with outside public and larger private organizations. Seventy-four is to make better use of city volunteers, particularly standing commissions. Again, that was combined with item sixty-five regarding commissioner use in meetings. Seventy-five is was rescinded, but it was evaluated the effectiveness of the C's code enforcement operations, and that was combined with item seventy-one regarding city staffing needs. Seventy-six was to examine longstanding city contracts with third parties to assess their present viability. Seventy-seven was rescinded as it relates to item sixty-one. Which brings us to our final strategic priority area, Kindred, if you'd like to.
Yeah, thank you, Michael. And once again, I just want to give a a quick shout out to Carlo Grogan and the communications team for these logos that are helping brand these projects or these priorities. It's it it really captures, I think, what the council is trying to accomplish with these priorities. Going through quickly on these items, item number seventy-eight, complete the annexation of Craftsman's Corner and develop a plan to annex other properties within the city's sphere of influence. Number seventy-nine, create a pilot affordable ADU program. Eighty, conduct an analysis and action plan to remedy neighborhoods without streetlights. Eighty-one, prioritize redevelopment of new one hundred percent affordable senior housing along Calabasas Road. Eighty-two, define the city's long-term land use strategies, including the next general plan update. Eighty-three, to the extent there are state mandates, emphasize affordable housing. For example, rather than just run numbers, look for additional units. Number eighty-four, provide options that allow for the relief of traffic congestion within the city. Incentivize citywide affordable housing in non non-fire hazardous zones. And number eighty-seven, promote housing development to ensure arena number requirements are met.
I think that was helpful for the members of the public and I will go to the public right now, Maury.
Mayor, before you do that, it looks like Councilmember Kraut has his hand up before.
Oh, go ahead, Councilmember Kraut.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. In our handout, Michael, there was a column that shows support in a number of one through five. It kind of gives the impression that council has voted on these items already. Could you clarify before we get to the public comment how that column of support was numbered one through five? So that the the public understands our process?
Yeah, so in after city council submitted the projects and initiatives listing, I'm sorry, let me back, let me backtrack. After the strategic priorities were selected, the stat city staff contacted each of the city council members and asked them for a listing of their desired projects and initiatives to meet the strategic pretty strategic priority goals. After receiving the the projects and initiatives of each of the city council members, we composed the list of eighty-seven that you see. Following the draft list, we staff met with city council members one-on-one to receive clarification and and generally gauge what the context of each of the projects and initiatives were so that we could combine, refine, rescind if if required. The support number was through our conversations generally gauging if there was support for that item then. And I think the thought for that tonight, and can you correct me, can you correct me if I'm wrong, was to simply highlight those areas as low-hanging fruit to get the ball rolling should the city council need a place to start on where we could start advancing some of them to the next round as in tonight. But there are no way was a vote on any of these items, and no way was this discussed in a in a formal manner, again, just really a way of of trying to highlight where areas of support in some way, shape, or form occurred.
Thank you, Michael. I think that really helps clarify this before we get into the public comment of what level of voting and prioritization the council has had. Those just really represent our similar lines of thinking that we've taken it to the next step already.
Thank you, Councilmember Kraut. Are there any other questions from the council before we move to public comment? Just questions? All right, I'm not seeing any hands up from my colleagues. But I don't have anybody on my screen. Okay, there we go. All right, I believe we're ready to move to public comment. Madam City Clerk?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. We will start with Brian Cameron, followed by Carol Washburn, then Edward Albrecht.
And they will state their name and their city of residence, please.
And Brian will have a presentation for you this evening.
Thank you. My name is Brian Cameron. I'm a long-term resident of Calabasas. I'm here tonight on behalf of Emergency Preparedness in Calabasas, a fire safe council, of which I'm the president. And the presentation I have is included in the handouts. Epic FSC is a fire safe council, is a registered nonprofit, nonprofit, five oh one C three volunteer organization. We now have about twenty members. We conduct outreach campaigns and educate on topics of emergency preparedness and recovery. Our goal is to provide timely Calabasas-specific information that will be centered on the safety and well-being of the residents in our community. In the event of wildfire earthquake, Epic will keep residents informed in real time. Our accomplishments, first, thank you, Calabasas City Council, for seating Epic FSC last May. Accomplishments to date, we got our determination later from the IRS. We created an Epic FSC website. We have been conducting high-strengthened for wildfire home hardening. We created a Calabasas-specific content ready for distribution, and to date, we have applied for three grants. What does Epic FSC do? As disaster prep and recovery educators, we support initiative thirty-five through wildfire preparation, home hardening, earthquake preparation before and what to do immediately after, resilient multi-channel communication of vetted PIO information. Our education platform is divided into two parts, pre-event and post-event. Why Epic FSC? As city council consolidates alerts, initiative twenty-four from various organizations, we are seeking to establish a more robust partnership with the city. We can fill a critical role with the city on a communication strategy, supporting initiative thirty-two through our ECA platform on such topics as safe zone locations and available evacuation routes when a disaster strikes. Epic FSC has developed a unique approach to disseminating emergency information that prioritizes what needs to be done, when it needs to be done, and how to recover from a disaster. Our goal is to facilitate with the city vetted information specifically for Calabasas residents, no matter the channel of delivery. So what is our ask? Epic FSC seeks to enhance our relationship with the city of Calabasas. We support initiatives twenty-four, thirty-two, thirty-five, and thirty-seven of the strategic plan. And in support, we believe better results can be achieved for our Calabasas community through an always-available app for cell phones and communication coordination with CTV and AM sixteen thirty. We, Epic FSC would like a seat at the EOC to help us disseminate PIO published information. In short, Epic FSC wants to help the city build the safety structure. Working together, we can make our residents safer while the city builds its organizational excellence and becomes a. Working together, we can make our residents safer while the city builds its organizational excellence and becomes a model for other cities to emulate. Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Next, we have Carl, I'm sorry, Carol Washburn. Carol, please state your name and the city you live in.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Maurer and city council members. My name is Carol Washburn, and I am a fifty-one-year resident of Calabasas. I'm here this evening representing the Calabasas Senior Community and as a member of the Calabasas Senior Center Advisory Board to encourage your support of the Calabasas Senior Center Shade Structure, that's item number forty-five. I've been involved with the Calabasas Savvy Senior Organization since my retirement eleven years ago and now serve with dozens of active and compassionate senior volunteers whose high level of dedication has led to a great success of the vibrant senior senior center. Today, we're not able to enjoy the center's beautiful outdoor patio because of extreme heat and lack of shade. We want to ensure the senior center members are safe outdoors as well as outdoors. The shaded patio will continue to expand our participation in educational programs, classes, events, club meetings, and simply enjoy gathering outside with friends year-round. We have all learned the existing building can readily be enhanced to serve our residents, Savvy Senior members, and our whole community. The expanded venue creates rental space opportunities and intergenerational programming opportunities that will benefit the city. Please continue your commitment and support of the Calabasas seniors by planning and budgeting of the Calabasas Senior Center Shade Structure. Thank you very much.
Ed Albrecht, please state your name and the city you live in.
Hi, good evening. My name is Ed Albrecht, resident of Calabasas going into my twenty-eighth year. And very happy and proud to be here tonight. This is just a wonderful example of the city we live in. This particular strategic priority plan is long in coming. I really need to say thank you to the council, to city manager, to staff. They've done a phenomenal job. There's so many items on here that we could use. Certainly, everybody has something that they'd want more than others. I certainly have three items, and I'd like to select from that. But it's just overwhelming. I'm so happy to see so many items that will fulfill this city in so many ways. The first, actually, the first two items I have are very low on the totem pole. It doesn't have much support, but I want to explain why I think it should. And that was what Carol had just spoke about a few minutes ago, the Calabasas Senior Center. It's it's a beautiful building. It was long in coming. We spent a lot of time having it built to our expectations, and so many seniors use it. I have been there so many times in the afternoon, and that direct sun that comes in from the west side is unbearing. And you're really, without shade, the seniors that are enjoying it are really locked indoors. You just can't go out there. So I'm hoping that might become a consideration. Sometimes you get the biggest benefit with spending the least amount of money, and I don't think that's a lot of money to put something in place so they can enjoy their outdoors. It's hot there from May all the way till October, so that's really almost the entire summer. So I'd like that to be considered. The other item I'd like to discuss is number twenty-five, public safety and emergency. And that's really develop and address the street racing concerns. Again, I think this is number two on the totem pole, but it seems like when the sun goes down, lawlessness is pervasive throughout the evening. And the noise is deafening, and it's only getting worse. And so far, we haven't had any fatalities, but Westlake has experienced one about two years ago with Rebecca Grossman. Two boys unfortunately lost their lives crossing the street in the crosswalks with their parents. So it has, there is a solution we have, and maybe we can introduce the flock camera system to help reduce that. I don't know if we can ever eliminate it and reduce it. And the other item I'd like to mention, if my time doesn't run out, and that is the Agoura Hills Calabasas Recreation Center. That really needs to have a higher priority. It would be nice if we could open that facility up. It's valuable and necessary, and the community could really use it down there. So thank you very much for your attention.
Michael Hart, followed by Rosa Besser. Michael, please state your name and the city you live in.
Michael Hart, and I live in Agoura at Malibu Lake. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Hi, everybody. I see a few familiar faces, and I hope to become more familiar with the future with you as we work together. I'm here to explain a project that will be a collaborative project between the city of Calabasas and the Los Verges Peninsula Water District, who has partnered with Triumpho Sanitate Water District and Sanitation District to save one point six billion gallons of water annually that will be turned back to our tab. The city of Calabasas has the opportunity to play a major part in the funding of this fantastic project, which is called the Pure Water Project. I can explain how the funding of all or most of the one hundred million dollars needed to complete the pure water project fits snugly into your prestigious work plan, which I've gone over very carefully. I would score very highly. Water may be the most important thing on the face of the earth for life, and only a tiny little fraction of it is in the form of freshwater potable water that we can use. I'm here to ask you, the city of Calabasas, to consider accepting a new multi-acre park and open space in exchange for managing it for a fee. This park will be unique. It will provide a space for quiet outdoor activities like walking, jogging, hiking, bird watching, horseback riding, things like that. The one difference between this park and like Paramount Ranch is that this park will also permit burial in a small part of the park. It will be a natural memorial park. And management of parks, memorial parks and cemeteries, is something that hundreds of cities do all across our land. It's not new. Between your resources and the water district's resources, most everything can be accomplished in-house, and what can't be can be outsourced. Very simply, I can show you how to do that. And under the supervision of perhaps your parks and recreation person or another designated person. This is an amazing opportunity for you to have hundreds of acres park, part of which will be, as I said, a memorial park to raise the money. Please give me additional time to come and speak with you at another time, and I can elaborate, have questions and answers, and clarify any questions you may have. Thank you.
Rosa, please state your name and the city you live in.
Calabasas resident. My name is Rosa Besser. Been living here an awfully long time, thirty-plus. Good evening, council members, mayor, and staff. I would just like to refresh your memories. In the spring of two thousand and seventeen, as I walked the neighborhood and met other dog lovers, we gathered names. We have two hundred-plus supporters on our list. That's not individuals, that's households. In fall of two thousand and seventeen, we gathered feedback and priorities for Wild Walnut Park at a public workshop. The number one priority was a dog park on the east side of the city. In winter, one year later, one season later, Community Services hired a landscape architect to draw plans for both a dog and children's area at Wild Walnut Park. Spring of two thousand and eighteen, the pre-commission approved the plans and moved to present their suggestions to city council. Fall of two thousand and eighteen, dog supporters voiced their desires. City council voted unanimously to move forward on Wild Walnut Park Dog and Children's Area. One year later, spring of two thousand and nineteen, city council approved the funding for the Dog Park and Children's Area, mentioning that LA County's Measure A for Parks and Beaches and Measure M from Maholand Highway could be put into play. January two thousand and twenty, I met with a representative from LA County and the Community Services Deputy and Director to check Wild Walnut Park out, and she was very impressed by the public support for this project, mentioning that Measure A would be a good source of funding. In September twenty twenty, yay, the Wild Walnut Temporary Park opens. It is now winter of two thousand and twenty-two, and I labeled this project an unfulfilled promise by the city council. We are number forty-eight on the list. I believe we shouldn't be even number zero. It has been promised. Please, let's move forward. Thank you.
Our last speaker, Madam Mayor, is Andy Schrader. Andy, please state your name and the city you live in.
Hi, Mayor and Council. I'm Andy Schrader, resident of Calabasas, not for fifty years. I appreciate the opportunity to comment tonight. I'm missing reading to my kids tonight to again strongly encourage the council to prioritize the creation of a climate action plan and better protect their future. Since I testified just last week, climate exacerbated disasters struck pretty much everywhere. For just a few examples, a fifteen-hundred-acre wildfires burning out of control near Bishop and Big Pine uncomfortably close to Yosemite National Park. Devastating floods and mudslides killed ninety-four people in Brazil, ninety-four people who were actually alive last week when I testified. A major storm is expected to cause floods and tornadoes across eleven US states from Texas to Virginia this week. And winds of up to a hundred miles an hour are expected to batter Wales and England on Friday, following eighty mile-per-hour winds today, which has caused widespread power outages in freezing weather. And that's just four of them this week. So it's not if, but when we will again experience our our own devastating climate impacts. Whenever the Santa Anas, the devil winds decide to raise their nasty heads. If the wind had blown a little more this direction, Woolsey would likely have taken down the oats among other parts of Calabasas. It's not if, but when. So we need a climate action plan before we need all the rest of these items, or frankly, the rest could just become irrelevant. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, we have additional speakers. Charlotte Meyer, followed by Susie Cooper.
Yes, let me just say, if you wish to speak, please raise your hand, and we can move you into our speaker queue.
Hey, good evening. I have two projects that I feel will save money, not just spend it, but save it. The first is, I'd like to see the council, as you go through this process of coming up with wonderful projects to fund, that you look at these, look at the existing projects, look at exactly what we have in place, and focus on eliminating the ones that have been on the books for a very long time, and they continue to stay there because they've always been there. And maybe we could identify some reserves and monies that are for projects that we really don't want or really need anymore. They might have been fantastic when they were first put on the books. We first saw they were wonderful. After all, the city is thirty years old. But maybe now they're not as big of a priority, but they're still there. My second one is recently, I've learned that a lot of our city departments get a budget. And if they don't spend all the money, they lose it. Having worked with other cities such as Westlake, they allow their departments to to make their money, put them in a piggy bank, and save them for projects that they can't necessarily have fully funded this year, but maybe in the near future, they can fund them. I know Westlake does this. And it's not a bad idea, because rather than saying, oh, well, we've got five thousand dollars, how are we going to spend it now? Well, maybe we could save it until we have fifteen thousand dollars in the department and really puts it to good use. My third item is something that I've noticed since I've been living here. When I first moved here, we had a tree board. We established a tree board, and that tree board had a very important impact on our community and our city. We revered oak trees at that time. We took such good care of our trees. We we even had a sign at the entrance to Calabasas that memorialized our commitment. It's a Tree City USA. We've become very, very focused on planting beautiful beds of flowers. It is a priority for our residents, but it's diverting a lot of money away from the management of our trees. A tree board could not only educate our residents, but the city could model the kinds of behaviors and management of our trees. It could educate, it could be a source of education for the trees and for our community. So I hope you'll consider that as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Susie Cooper, please state your names, city you live in.
Hello, my name is Susie Cooper. I live in Mulwood, Calabasas. I grew up here. I went to the LVUSD schools. And now I have elementary-age students going through the school district. I am thrilled to see your number three project initiative. I that is identify real property acquisitions for the purpose of future park land and open spaces, space designation. I'm happy to see that that's on there. I hope that that's because we do not have a public park, a real public park on the east side of Calabasas. We have three completed parks on the west side of Calabasas with grass play equipment, tennis, basketball courts, shade structures, bathrooms. But there is not one public, even grass, area on this side of Calabasas, and I'm hoping that that number three and also number forty-six, that something will be put in for teenagers to go and hang out at instead of just going to the commons. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Harrison.
Thank you, Mari, and I want to thank Kendon and Michael and the city council. These are all wonderful ideas. And and I also agree with Charlotte Meyer on this separation of the tree board from the Environmental Commission. They may not even know that they're combined right now. But the tree board used to be independent, and it was responsible for maintaining street trees and oak trees. And it could be the vehicle for requiring native vegetation. I also think there's a public safety issue. I mentioned this. I sent this to in an email to all of you about the paver crosswalks, which are in many areas now invisible and dangerous. Just one right outside of the city council, you can't see it when you're driving towards it. But along Calabasas Road Parkway, Calabasas, the roundabout, and Park Serrano. I also think the green building ordinance, which I brought to the council over twenty years ago, is outdated. I think we should require carbon-neutral building and the offsets, which are trees, could either be onsite, or if that's a fire problem, they could be offsite. They can plant trees now for a dollar a piece, so that's not a big issue. We should eliminate site runoff. We should have electric vehicle charging, whether it's level one or two. At every new parking space in the city, we should have separate water meters for every all-new construction so that people don't waste water. We should have power backup in all new construction, and we should prohibit natural gas in all new construction, just like many other cities. We're kind of behind this on this. And then finally, I think I mentioned this over a year ago on the on the planning commission, I would like to see some kind of Kobe Bryant memorial in Calabasas, a safe place for people to pay their respects. I've visited the James Dean Memorial. And he died in nineteen fifty-five, but people are still visiting and bringing flowers and so forth. And I think there could be a nice memorial there. It doesn't have to cost the city anything. I'm sure there are plenty of people who would contribute funds and even sculptures and so forth. So those are my comments. Again, I think you're doing a wonderful job. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, we have no other speakers. Michael Brockman, you had your hand up, but you lowered it. You no longer want to speak? If so, please raise your hand. There he goes. Go ahead, Michael. You're on mute.
There you go. Michael Brockman, longtime Calabasas resident, and I'm speaking tonight as Chair of the Communications and Technology Commission. The purpose is, I think, maybe addressed in one of your, a couple of your units, but we just wanted to encourage you to include in the strategic session the The continued pursuit of the wireless providers to provide better cell phone service. To the community and to upgrade their systems. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, we have no more hands up. If anyone wishes to speak on this item, please raise your hand at this time. No hands, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. That was very helpful. Thank you for everyone for taking the time this evening to share your ideas. It's very helpful. So now what we're going to do, and Steph, we talked about this council, we did also, I just want to articulate it to make sure it still sounds like a good way to proceed. Is we're going to take each strategic priority. There's six of them, one at a time. And each council member will go down the list and efficiently. But asking questions if you have some, or as Steph has said, we could have a dialogue about this as well. Going item by item. And let me ask Kindon, is that your preference?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. That is exactly what we're hoping to do is, again, capture each priority. And then open this up, as you mentioned, one by one for the council members to have that dialogue, ask questions of their peers and their colleagues. And also gives us a chance. As Michael mentioned in the presentation, that there's the goal of being, that these goals are smart goals. So that, you know, we, we talk often about measurable and achievable, reachable. So if there's something on the list that maybe you presented, or maybe that you support, but would like some, to be further. Or rewritten in a way that it's more precise, we can take that as an opportunity to discuss that as well. So thank you, Mayor.
Okay. I think it would be helpful to put the strategic priorities up again for the public's purposes. We have our own copies in front of us. But we'll be starting with the environmental leadership. If I could add one thing, one thing I have considered as I've gone through this exercise, a couple of things. One is an unknown. But I've looked at, what does the city need? And what does the city want? What do we want? But, and I've tried to prioritize what I think what the city needs. I also am mindful of costs, both with financial costs and staff resources in overreaching on some projects. And so that those, I just want to put those out there as well. And Councilmember Kraut, you had your hand up, did you? I see it's down now. Did you want to?
Yeah, thank you. Just a quick question here. I think I'd support ninety percent of what was up on the screen. Is that the goal tonight? Or am I trying to whittle this down a bit?
Yeah, the goal tonight is to choose each individual to choose up to five. That means you don't have to choose five. But I mean, it could be two that you just feel really strongly about. And not the, and not five. And, and why? So with that.
Can I add to that?
Yes.
And Councilmember Kraut, I think that's a wonderful question because as Ed Albrecht mentioned. All of these items on this list are really meaningful. They, they actually bring ideas from our, the constituents, our community. These are ideas that you have thought of as a council. And so we want to reiterate that as we go through these and as council discusses these. Eventually, we'll ask you to select up to five, as the mayor mentioned. This does not mean that the others will disappear. We'll retain this list and this will continue to come up. There'll be opportunities either to revise the, the work plan depending on. Resources or funding opportunities that come in that might accelerate something that wasn't initially considered. And also, when we start the process next year at this time. This list will be used as the springboard to start that conversation. And so we will use these existing ideas and start that where, and you know, through this year, you'll have time to, to. To generate new ideas as well as talk with constituents that will have input. And so we'll use this as a springboard and continue with those ideas moving into the next cycle.
And other council. Five total or five in each strategic priority?
And, you know, more than five under each strategic priority.
Thank you.
I'll take more questions from the council before we get started. Councilmember Bazajin.
Yes, I, I understand that could be up to thirty items that get on our priority plan. I, I would strongly suggest that it be up to five and that nobody feel obligated to choose five. We're not going to efficiently do thirty items. What will happen is it'll just become a list, a wish list that never gets done. And we have experience with this and other aspects like our future agenda items list. So I'm going to be very sparing in what I, what I select. And I would just hope that council members wouldn't feel obliged to pick an absolute five.
Thank you. Councilmember Wintrom.
Thank you. I agree with what James said as well. But as we've gone through this exercise, which I support, there's just some things on here that I think are really important. But they, they're not council strategic plans. To me, they're things that could be executed by staff. And staff has the authority to do these things without council direction. So although I think some of these things are important, I think they should just be done. And. They shouldn't take the place of something that is a real strategic, like a policy direction. Some of these things Kindon and his staff, staff can just run with and do for the better of the community.
Kindon, you wanted to respond or?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment. And thank you, Alicia. Thank you, James, both for those comments. Alicia, maybe first to yours, as, as we've gone through this process and we've heard you as council members. We've had some of those same thoughts as we've, as we've looked at this list, we've, and see that there's. You know, three, four, five council members that have mentioned these same items. To us, that becomes a no-brainer that this is important to the council. And so even though it might not enter into the work plan for this year. We know it's important to you and it's something we need to work on. Councilmember Bazajin, and just also with the process and for the, the community who's watching. What we're, what we will do tonight is we will have you, as the council prior to, prioritize up to five in each category. From here, the list will go to our commissioners, our advisory boards, members of the community. And we'll ask them to pick up to three from each category. And then it will come back to the council with the recommendations from that, those stakeholder groups. And we'll ask you, council, to then prioritize that list of three under each category to two under each category. So really what we're trying to do is really create a list, again, that's workable. Over this next twelve months, eighteen months of about twelve projects or initiatives that we can focus on.
All right. And if I could add that. To my colleagues, do not feel rushed on. This evening through this process. If you feel like we need more time to deliberate as we move forward and it's getting late into the evening. Or for all I know, it could go very quickly, but just know that. Our next council meeting, which is next Wednesday, by design, is light, is very light. And the intent was that if we needed to continue this evening's discussion, we could do so into next week. So please take the time you need unless you are, you know, ready to just make your, your, your decision. But know that we can go into the next meeting. All right. I'm not seeing any other hands up regarding questions or clarifications or perspectives. So we'll get started and I'm going to choose one council member each time to begin. And then we'll just rotate as we go. So we each have an opportunity to influence the others at the beginning of the process. On which, by the way, I think that there'll be ample opportunity, once you do speak, after you do hear from your colleagues, to change your mind. And so we'll go for a quick second round and, and more if we need. So again, we'll, we'll make this as engaging and fun as possible. So I'm going to start, we could put up the environmental leadership. Those are priorities one through twelve. And I'm going to start with Mayor Pro Tem David Shapiro. If you could go first and, and cite your priorities for this exercise.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I have a couple of questions. Do you want me to ask the questions first before I give some priorities, questions of those who put these items on there?
Absolutely.
Okay. And I think, Peter, I think one is yours. And I was confused with the first time it was brought up, the, this is number four, which was to allow for. A smoking area, as I heard it last time. Now it's to increase the prohibition. So I, I'm just asking for an explanation if that was yours as to item number four, please.
Yeah, that was mine. And just to be quick and clear about this. The problem is cigarette butts are scattered throughout the trail along the creek and even down into the creek. And it was my understanding when I first put this item up there that there was no smoking section. And therefore the smokers were just randomly throwing cigarette butts there. Since that last meeting, I did walk the creek and I noted that several businesses have located their smoking sections in the back parking lots. And they do have ashtrays there. And I found a number of cigarette butts scattered on the ground that were less than twenty feet away from an ashtray. So it's not really a problem of not having smoking sections. The problem is that people just aren't using them. That was why the language here was changed.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to work from twelve backwards and start with my priorities that I found. I find to be most important and compelling. The first one I'll mention is number ten. Which I am very supportive of. There, there's a number of things in there. I'm happy to go into detail, but I think it's pretty self-explanatory. And indicate that, is that, and then go forward. The next item that I would mention, of course, is item number seven. And I have a little more detail on that in addition to, and we have been meeting already. Mayor and myself and, and Kindon and, and more. To, to work towards this. I think there's more we can do here, not just hiring a consultant. But also actually implementing and doing, whether it's one, two, three, four, or five items that would fall under potentially a climate action plan. Those are things I'd like to see us actually do in the next year or two. And put on, put on that. If we, some things we may or may not need a, a coordinator to tell us. We already know what could be a good thing to do. So that's something that I think is very important. Also, educate, the number six, educate residents. Of the state's new food waste requirements, informational campaigns, and work with waste management to coordinate the programs. I've had many complaints from residents, questions, inquiries about what do we do? Are we supposed to get this little bucket in our kitchen and keep it there? Why are we not getting new containers? So I think all we, everything we can do to educate the public and get the information out and get waste management. On board with us will be very, very helpful. And next I'll go to number three, identify potential real property acquisitions for the purposes of parkland open space. So important. Again, we, we all know how important open space is and parks are vital to the city as well. And once you lose that property, you don't get it back. So. Those are my four. I have a bunch or a few others that I would certainly support, but I'll pass on to someone else so we can keep the ball rolling. Thank you, Madam.
Wonderful. Councilmember Bazajin.
Okay. Item number three, I put on item three and I support it very strongly. It's one of my top items. Item number four to me is not a strategic priority. It's something that could go to one of our commissions. Or even within staff and deal with it there for a recommendation. Or maybe it doesn't even need council action, but I don't think that's a larger problem that needs to be addressed at a, at a long-term strategic priority. As far as. Okay, as far as number eight. I, I didn't know what number eight necessarily involved. Is that an ordinance change, like a statutory thing?
Kindon, are you going to respond or that's actually one of mine? We, we do have a procurement. A green procurement policy, but it was never. Implemented and it was done so long ago, it's outdated. So this is in an effort to reduce our waste stream and to buy. Products from recycled paper to, you know, everything that we purchase, looking at the waste stream, the life of it. So that's the intent there.
All right. I, you know, I remember us having general agreement on most of those items when it came before, but disagreement on some items. So I would, I would be cautious about doing it all at once or just giving a green light to doing it. And then just presenting it all in one, in one fell swoop. I won't give examples, but, but I could.
So, so are you in support or not?
No, I, because I, I think it's easier just to, I, I don't know if that's. I don't know if it's a strategic priority, if it's already in, in place and all that has to come is debating various parts of it. I don't know that I put it as a strategic priority, could just go on an agenda. Either piecemeal or altogether. Especially if you're telling me that it already exists.
It does already exist. It just needs to be updated.
All right, number ten, I support number ten. I put a, this was a combination of one I put on and a couple of other people put on. So I would support number ten. Number eleven is another one that's very specific that I don't think needs to be a strategic priority. It just is a very, very small category that we should not take up a slot. And number eleven I put on, but I, or sorry, twelve I put on. But I think that does not also, in retrospect, does not need to be a strategic priority. It's a little bit too. I mean, it could be handled another way. We have existing ordinances. Staff could send out another communication to residents regarding the. You know, how to, how to take out their cans, how to put them in, what not to put in the cans, how not to have them overflowing, et cetera. So I, I don't need number twelve. So those are my two. I would put three and ten would be my main ones. Subject to other council members, subject to discussion.
Okay. All right, next, Councilmember Kraut.
Thank you. So just want to start off with the general public. Number two, prohibit the use of gas leaf blowers was taken off. Because in twenty twenty-four, the state law prohibits the sale of gas-powered leaf blowers. So this is allowing us to phase out gas leaf blowers. It's not going to happen overnight. But it'll also allow an opportunity for those that have a gas leaf blower. Maybe have a business using a gas leaf blower and can't afford to upgrade them. It'll give them a chance to, to roll into the program. So I just wanted to explain that that was taken off and we recognize that the state law is not a one-for-one replacement of what was started here. I think number three, like many have said already, is probably my number one priority on this list. Number four, I think we can, you know, understand is certainly something we want to do, but I don't know that's going to count as a strategic priority. For me, number five also makes my list. Number five is important because we were the leader in green building. We proceeded, preceded the California Green Building Code when we required commercial buildings to be lead silver. Unfortunately, the way our ordinance is written, we are now horribly out of date, as Commissioner Harrison pointed out earlier. And if we're going to be leaders in the environmental issues. I think it's important that we take what we've already done and bring it up to date. Number six, instead of supporting that, I would, I would support number twelve and combine the two. Because as we increase the education and enforcement of residential trash container rules and requirements. That would include our green trash as well. I think we could combine those two and I would support number twelve if they were combined. The hiring of a consultant for the coordinated development of a climate action plan. I'm not going to support this evening, although I support the idea and concept. I'm certainly looking forward to input from our environmental commission as to how they would handle things. I am a little concerned at the cost of a climate action plan and the. I am a little concerned at the cost of a climate action plan and the items that appearing in the ones that I've read appear to be much common sense and a lot of commonality between us and our surrounding communities. So I want a little more information and input from others on that before I jump in to support that. Although again, I do support the climate action. I do support all that we're doing. I'm just not sure how the climate action plan falls into this order of operations here. As far as the rest of these, all great stuff, but if I have to keep my list short and sweet, I'd stick with the ones I have. The one last comment, I guess I'd say is number ten, although I'm not gonna support it this evening. I think it's a worthwhile goal. I do believe that that is something that the Las Vegas Municipal Water District is taking the lead on. And I think it's our role to support them not to take over that process. So those are my thoughts.
Can I ask you for more clarification on your hesitation to adopt or hire a consultant to get this process going? There will be commission and other involvement. And I mean, I would I would be, yeah, if you support it. But it sounds like the process is you're not comfortable with. I'm just not sure what it is you need in order to support it.
Sure, it's my understanding that the City of Agoura Hills has paid three hundred thousand dollars for the authorship of their document to date. Is that correct?
I I'm gonna turn it to Kendon. It's an astronomical amount of money. Whether it's two fifty or three hundred, it's thereabouts. Our intent is not even to come close.
And I would just say that the content that I saw that was in there was certainly good recommendations. But most of it is what I would consider common knowledge. Certainly with today's state of awareness of the climate. So I would definitely support climate action, but I'm not sure that a three hundred thousand dollar price tag to have somebody write it down on a piece of paper for us is necessary. If there's another way to solve that, whether our commission ghost writes it or whether we take it from other sources or team up with other organizations and come up with a much smaller price tag, then I would certainly be in favor of it.
I'm gonna allow the city manager who's been in those discussions address it. We are mandated by law to create one. So we can't just not do one. And I agree with you a hundred percent that the price tag of Agora Hills was unbelievable. And we know we can take some of this common sense suggestions. But we do have to do an inventory of our greenhouse gas emissions. Where is it coming from? We know it's transportation primarily. We know it's energy and we went to default a hundred percent clean. We made a huge step forward. We've done a whole history of small steps already that we feel pretty confident that we can move forward in a very economical and swift way. And I think the task force was put in place for our colleagues to trust our judgment. And and, you know, if you have concerns or questions at any point to ask us. But Kendon, I'm gonna turn it over to you regarding the consulting aspect.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. At our last sustainability task force, what we discussed and it's it's a little bit different than what's written here, but I think it leads to this is. What we've understood is we went through this process in in talking with each of the council members is, Peter, as you mentioned, I think there's a very, very sincere interest to protect the environment in our community and and also reduce emissions. What we've heard is from the council members is there's different ways to approach that. What the sustainable, I'm sorry, what the sustainability task force recommended at our last meeting is as a first step, bring in a consultant, schedule one-on-one meetings with each of the council members. And thereby soliciting from you what is important in regards to the environment. Whether that is reducing the waste stream, EV charging, maybe it's increased. You know, the we talked about the the procurement policy, maybe it's a full electric fleet of vehicles. But allow the consultant to have that conversation one-on-one with each of the council members. And then schedule a workshop where we could then talk about collectively what is important to the council. And I think by doing that, that would clear a lot of what we see through the process. There's again that desire that people want to be proactive, but different ways to approach that.
Okay, anything else from you, council member Crowe on any of these items?
No, I think that's good. We're good for now.
Okay, next, council member Weintraub.
And just one second, Mayor, I apologize. And council member Crowe or Michael, did you did we make sure we get all of the ones that council member Crowe identified? We have that as. We just wanna make sure, Peter, that we got everything. Number here, number three, number five. And number twelve, but combining number twelve with number six is is your question. And do you want us to then put a check by number twelve there? Or or would it be by number six?
Well, again, I number twelve as written would not be combined with. I'm sorry, number. Number six as written could not be combined with number twelve, but number twelve could be combined with number six, if you follow what I'm saying there.
Yeah.
So they're very different. One is bring your trash cans off the street. The other one is reducing methane gas by. You know, composting your food.
One is educating our residents on what to put into a green bin. And the other one is educating our residents on not only what to put in a green, blue, and black bin, but also taking them off the streets and keeping the lids closed and all that sort of stuff. And I think they're all related. I would support the two combined, no matter which number we put it under.
All right, council member, did you get those all? Michael?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Weintraub.
Okay, let's see. I mean, now the numbers are here. I'll wait till. Okay, perfect. I would support number three, identify potential real property acquisition for the purpose of future parkland or open space designation. Number six, if it's a state mandate, it's a state mandate, correct? And okay, so to me, if it's a state mandate and we're not complying with it, somehow we have to. Whether or not it's a strategic goal, or it's having waste management do the outreach, or somebody from the state, whatever, some state agency, but it has to be done because I don't know, I don't really know anyone. I mean, maybe some of my colleagues are doing it, but I don't think a majority of our residents, our city will not be in compliance. So whether or not that's a grand strategic priority, but it's something that has to be done. And that's what I was kind of speaking of earlier. Like, there's things that I want to see happen, but I don't know if it's like a grand strategic priority, but I know it's a state mandate. It's something that will help improve, make contributions to improving the environment. It's something we have to do that our residents are just not aware of. So you can put you can put me down for it or just or we can just get it done.
You know, Alicia, I'll just add, I think you need to put yourself down there because I've asked staff about this. At least we have a consultant to work on this. And there's a very much a laissez-faire kind of response, like, well, we're not gonna give all the counter recycling out. I don't think they're they're planning on that. And they didn't have a plan. So I think they need to be directed a little more strongly to create a plan.
But I also think we could speak to what are our neighboring cities do doing with this? How is this being? What are what is that? What are other people doing to get this done?
Well, we used to be the leaders. People used to look to Calabasas and say, what are they doing? Now we're just, we've lost sight.
Let's see. Hold on. I like what Peter talked about with the lead building. Can you go to that? What number? Right, yes, number five. You could put me down for that. Kinda goes back to we used to be the leader and now we've fallen behind on a lot of these things. The water resilience plan, you know, I kinda wanna put on some of our items throughout, like Las Vegas Municipal Water District. Like, we have other government partners who are taking the lead on this. So I won't put that down because I think that that's water resilience plan. I think cities drought preparedness. I think a lot of that's already being done. And I just wanna make sure we're really able to accomplish what we say we're gonna do in a year. This is a lot of stuff and we still have all of our day-to-day things. So I'm gonna keep my stuff small. I'm only gonna put myself down for a few on under this subject. Oh, wait, one question regarding the climate action plan. To the subcommittee or Kendon, how much are you thinking for a consultant to do this plan? Cuz I do agree with with what has already been said. We're not gonna spend three hundred thousand dollars on a consultant and there's so much documentation out there now from other cities, other policy agencies, that I think like it's not hard now to put together a climate action plan like it was probably a few years ago. So how much are you thinking that we would spend on a consultant?
I apologize. So council, last budget cycle, we allocated or put into the the budget about fifty thousand dollars that could be used for climate action plan, climate action, climate action analysis. And so with that, what we would recommend again, Alicia's going back to the Sustainability Task Force. You know, ideas right now is to hire a consultant to walk us through that process. And as part of that workshop, the consultant could then give us that, if you call it a spectrum of options of, you know, if we were to spend X amount, what kind of plan does that get us all the way up to this much? What would that give us? And I think that gives us a council more of an informed and decision-making opportunity at that point.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else, council member Weintraub?
Thank you.
Okay, all right. So I'll just go quickly. Number three, acquisition of open space or parkland, especially in light of the thirty by thirty initiative. There will be funds available to purchase. So I would suggest that we do an inventory and reach out to property owners to gauge their interests so that we can be ready when the money becomes available to start negotiations. Number five. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Number six, the food waste. That one I feel very strongly about. Number seven, I feel strongly about. And I agree with Mayor Protem Shapiro regarding number seven. It's it's such it's such a vague. Hire a consultant to coordinate the development of climate action. But there's no details there. But I would also expect that there be this greenhouse gas inventory that we, you know, we already have Malibu Foundation's vulnerability assessment. That's a component of a climate action plan. That's already been done. There are other pieces around. There's a lot we could be doing and moving forward quickly regardless. You know, yeah, without a consultant. I mean, we could just keep moving on that. I'm not, I support number eight. Not only would it be purchasing procurement, but it would also be making sure our vehicles are a hundred percent electric. And I have also number ten, the water resiliency plan. Okay. Let's move on to fiscal resiliency and we're gonna start this time with council member Buzajin. Any other questions about environmental, any other? Sorry, I just kinda.
I just have a question. Now, can you just go back to the environmental section?
Ken, I didn't know if we wanted to have an overview of of the five that will be chosen from.
That's what that's where that was my question.
Wait, what is the what is the question? What was the answer?
Do we wanna select the five consensus items that will be?
So we should go back to the environmental and look at it. Okay, good. Let's do that. I was thinking we do that at the end, but it makes much more sense to do it now.
Well, anything with three could just be chosen, right?
So so I am super disappointed that we only have two for the climate action plan. And it's really based on kind of have wanting information that we don't have right now, the cost of this. And I would I would ask my colleagues to consider supporting it and then withdrawing if you find that when we get that number in the next month or so, you're unhappy with it.
But we have, we have in our budget, if I recall correctly, three hundred thousand dollars to spend. Why does it have to be in the strategic plan? It's already been budgeted.
We don't, we don't have that budgeted. We have fifty thousand for a consultant to do the initial. You know, how it should take us quite a bit, Kendon.
Wait, I thought we had three hundred thousand dollars that we set aside for the climate action plan. Did that not correct, Kendon?
We have fifty.
Yeah, no, Councilman Buzajin, so last year during the budget process, the council allocated fifty thousand dollars towards a a climate action plan. It wasn't specific on how that would be used. Again, you know, what the the task force is recommending is bring a consultant in initially, interview, meet with the council, do a workshop, and then go from there to determine projects, plan, whatever that might be, according to the preference of the.
If that can be done with fifty thousand dollars, I'd support it. Is that all you want, Mary Sue?
Well, James, we really don't know yet, but we know that fifty thousand dollars will get us, you know, significantly down the road, but we don't have that final figure. We also know that it took Agora years, several years. And what was the Kendon, what was it, two fifty?
Yeah, Mayor, so the last time, so maybe as a matter of clarification, is Agora is still not done with their process.
Yeah.
So they they they've been working on this for several years. The last number that I received from the city manager was between two fifty and three hundred thousand. It was close, it was at the two fifty, but they were still working on it using consultants. And that was probably about five months ago when I got that last number. And then they hadn't, they hadn't taken into account or budgeted for upcoming years to implement those goals. And so there's there would be an annual cost going forward to implement those goals as well.
Well, I'd have to know what that is if you want support for it, because there's just no way. I mean, it's just not, there's no budget here.
Well, we, you know, we have the budget process right around the corner. So that's something we can fix for the next year. David, I don't know if you wanna chime in with anything or?
Only thing I was gonna add, thank you, is that we had as council approve the fifty thousand already. It's within city manager's discretion. We are, we're as a task force, we've been moving forward along those lines, not to spend the whole fifty thousand, but to get the process started. And the other point of the I was gonna make was the item number five. To me is one of those examples of something that should just be done and be on an agenda about updating or to be under the, and we could take credit for it later on in the climate action plan, cuz we're doing something good. But that's a very direct to update our code, unless there is not agreement on that by council. That's something that should be very simple.
I would agree and add my name to that one. You're right.
Mayor Mauer, I'll add my name to item number seven. If we will begin with the fifty thousand that we have, hire a consultant to see where that process takes us. I just wanna reemphasize that if there's a way to combine our efforts with another city, find economies of scale there, use boilerplate information, have our city staff write portions of it. I wanna do this as cost effectively as possible, and I'm just a little gun shy at the price tag I've seen in other cities.
And and I will tell you, Agora Hills is not the model for this city. We have to move quicker and we have to use the a lot of the information that is available. As far as partnering, we tried that with the COG. There was not interest. However, there is interest possibly with Malibu and or Topanga and the Palisades, like communities, like-minded communities. Although Topanga with the City of Los Angeles has already, they've already adopted or are about to adopt a plan. And I'm sorry, the Topanga with LA County and the Palisades. And I'm sorry, the Topanga with LA County and the Palisades with LA City, they're both much further ahead than we are. So um, we're looking at that. And also there's the Malibu Foundation. They have been very, very encouraging. I believe they would like to see a model climate action plan that is both affordable and nimble for the rest of the region and the state and the country to use. And I think we've got a team together to to do that. Um, and 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 David's, David's correct, we do have fifty thousand. So um, I appreciate your support and we'll come back and you know, obviously you'll be updated all the time, but our goal is to be economic and nimble. We have to, we have to move quick.
You have hands up, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Um, I see a hand up, Alicia. Uh, go ahead, Councilmember Weintraub.
The consultant's proposal will come to council because of the price, correct?
I, it, it should, I guess. I don't, Kindon, I mean, it's under sixty thousand. It's already.
Fifty, fifty thousand is still a lot for a document. Like that.
You want it, if you want to look at it, we'll out absolutely, or Matt, if we have to, absolutely.
Existing authority for the.
As transparent as possible.
Oh, no, I'm not thinking that you and David aren't trying to be transparent. I'm just saying that this is such like a new thing for the city that I think it for something like this, it would be prudent for everyone to look at.
Absolutely. And I set up a OneDrive folder for all documents to be in. So everyone has the same access to the same information as the task force. Um, any follow up questions before I call in?
Madam Mayor, if I could answer the question was posed there. It, the city's existing policy allows the city manager to sign contracts for up to sixty thousand. However, given the importance of this item and the need for continuing public transparency, uh, Kindon may well decide to put that contract on the council agenda for review and approval.
We, we will commit to it because there will be an educational component along with that contract.
I'm most concerned with these plans that it's not just a plan, that it's actually like doing something. Cause if it's just a plan, staff can do it. We, I mean, there's so many, that's a lot of money for an outside person to come in and tell us stuff that we might already know.
So, so we've been doing the research and we've been looking at plans and we've put a couple of plans you've both, you've all been sent Agora Hills and Santa Monica's. If you want to look at a model of um, efficiency and yet local, and I I'm not sure what Santa Monica paid, but there's a model for you and it's very useful. The plan must identify our problems, our greenhouse gas emissions. The plan must include solutions. The plan must includes metrics that we are moving forward in reducing our emissions. So it's, it's very scientific based and very um, measurable. So it, that's our intent.
And let's find out what Santa Monica paid.
We can do. All right, um, I Michael McConville, and then Councilmember Bazajin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, just a couple of points and Kindon, if you want to add on, you can. Um, so staff is, this is just again for tonight to reduce to five um, projects and initiatives. And in all of the colored items, there's five. So I would propose maybe just moving forward with these because at a different time, specifically in April, the city council will make the final approvals of the two or the three items. And at that time, staff will be providing some comments.
So we've already said that we have two nights to do this if we need it. I think this was a really good discussion and I wouldn't want to shortchange anyone's, you know, input. So if we could just finish on this environmental and see what where we're at and maybe there's more movement, maybe not, but let's shake it out.
Right. And again, staff will be able to provide some additional comments at those future meetings to some of the questions that we've had.
Thank you, as well as now too. And in fact, it perhaps we should have more staff at this meeting. Councilmember Bazajin.
Final comment on this is I would agree with Peter on the combination of six and twelve. So if they're combined in the way he said, then I'd vote for that too.
Okay, and I will uh, support the combination as well. Can we have the list back up so we could see where we're at right now? Thank you. Um, Alicia, where were you on number seven?
I mean, I think it, the money's already budgeted. We already talked about it. I just want to see. I don't want to say yes to hiring the consultant. I want to see the plan. I want to see a proposal from any consultant. So I'm fine with bringing forward um, proposals from different consultants. Cause I thought that money.
No right now.
No, no.
So is it an X or a blank?
There's already money in the budget. Right? I mean, there's already money. So that's like.
There's money to hire a consultant to coordinate the development of a climate action plan. Yes.
Right. So to me, that was something that like I wasn't marking that as one of my priorities because to me that was already done. Like.
For the purpose of identifying the top five, this is, you have five there.
Yeah, it's fine. I'm just saying for something like this, because to me, that's a lot of money for a consultant. I just want to see the, I thought we could all review the contract.
So it's no, it's right now. So we have, there's our.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that you have money right now. I wouldn't just, if if I have to say yes to hiring a blank consultant for an unknown amount of money, then it would be a no. But if I'm able to look at a contract with a dollar amount, I just don't want to say yes to some number that I don't even know. Like what if it's a hundred thousand dollars or if it's twenty five thousand, that's different to me.
It's more the concept that we're moving forward with the climate action plan and we need a consultant to do that.
I know, but I'm just trying to understand how much is this going to cost? Are we Agora or are we?
We, most of these plans don't have that level of detail or these concepts. I'm sorry, these concepts, they're just kind of weird. The concept is something we support.
I support, I support the concept, but and if it, if I see something that says hire a consultant, I have to ask how much will it cost?
So we have up to fifty thousand period. That's it. That was in the budget.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to say. To me, this was already like a done deal.
Then then put an X there.
All right, can we, can we move on? There's three there. I.
Michael, can you put that back up? I want to see if anyone else has anything else they want to do here. Are we done with this? Any last comments? I saw hands.
Five, you have five though.
James, I, people have their hands up. Kindon.
Mayor, I'm going to put my hand down. I, I'll come back to that.
Okay, anyone else? Then we're going to move to fiscal resiliency.
Okay, I guess, am I starting, you said?
Yes.
All right, number fifteen, I would mark. I'm wavering on number, on number fourteen. I'm sorry. I, I meant number thirteen, sorry.
Yep.
Thirteen, I would support thirteen, not fourteen. Okay, fourteen, I'm wavering on fifteen, I would definitely support. Sixteen, I would definitely support. I, I do not want to do seventeen. I think that's something the Chamber of Commerce could be doing for part of its contract. Um, number twenty, I would support that as well. So those are mine on that.
Okay, any other comments on?
Um, well, the other comments would be on number fourteen. Um, I want to see what the other council members say. I could support that, but it wouldn't be my highest priority. That's it.
Okay. Next is um, Councilmember Crowe.
Uh, thank you for that. Um, number thirteen, I would absolutely support. In fact, that's one of my highest priorities is to make sure that we have the money in the bank for when our roots and HVAC equipment fails in the future because it's guaranteed to happen. We should be budgeting for that. We should have already put that money away and and we've actually already begun looking at that as part of our budget process. So uh, whether we vote on it as a policy or not, it's already somewhat underway. Uh, number fourteen, a fee study associated with new development in commercial construction. The reason that this is put forth is a number of our projects go to planning and spend a considerable amount of time with a planning meeting, with city council meetings, with attorney's fees, with staff time. And um, I do not believe that our fees in all cases cover all of those expenses. Um, so a study would be able to identify why the cost of our planning staff is greater than the cost of the or the the funds brought in. And if it's, uh, if it reveals what I think it might, it will save us money. So I'm in favor of fourteen. Um, number fifteen, again, a very high priority, definitely in favor of that. Um, skipping on down to number twenty, that'd be creating a general fund reserve policy, definitely put me down for that. And then no need to put me down for them because eighteen and nineteen are also listed in our packet as in process. This has been discussed in the budget subcommittee and will be coming to you for part of our city budget uh, process twenty two, twenty three. Both eighteen and nineteen will be discussed. And so I don't think we need to address them here on this list.
So that's the first I've heard that. Can you elaborate? We're taking, we would take these off because it's already going to be addressed and recommended by the budget task force, eighteen, nineteen?
Sure. Number eighteen says create a plan to address the CalPERS unfunded liability.
Yep.
One of the things that we've done as a budget subcommittee is looked at uh, the anticipated um, uh, money that we would have and try to budget out where we would, you know, allocate that and both the council uh, Mayor Protem Shapiro and myself uh, have really taken a position of being responsible with our money and with the debt that we have and the uh, money that's coming in from you know, uh, tax base and and uh, other sources. Um, we don't encourage spending of all of that money. Some of that should be used to pay down previous debt. So we'll be looking at those two items. The, the debt for, for eighteen. Um, sorry for uh.
Right, just a follow up question. I saw staff already marked them off. Those are two of my top priorities is.
Oh, I apologize. I'm, I'm sorry.
No, 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 that's okay. But I just, I, I'm, I'm, you are absolutely a hundred percent confident that we will be addressing this in the budget process.
I will not let the budget process concludes until we have beaten those horses to death. They were a very big concern of mine. And uh, whether it shows up on this list or not, I will be having that conversation, all of you during the budget process.
So Kindon, is this?
Uh, Mayor, so we've already had two meetings with the budget subcommittee uh, specifically on these items.
Okay.
They've asked for further information. Uh, Ron and I are securing that data as we speak. We have our budget, our mid-year budget meeting in March ninth. We'll come back with the budget subcommittee and discuss again, the CalPERS and the OPEB liabilities. Uh, and we hope to have enough information at that time that uh, during the budget process, the council members can present a recommendation to them.
Okay, that's important for all of us to hear. Are there any, anytime there's a, an update to any of these? It's helpful to know. Um, Councilmember Crowe, did you have any other comments?
That's my list. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Weintraub.
Thank you. Um, I would support number thirteen. Hmm, I have a question regarding fifteen. I guess this is a question for Kindon. Do we have any current staff that has grant writing skills or any staff, any job that are about to be filled where the candidate might have grant writing skills?
Uh, we do, council members. So um, and and right now it's spread out over different departments. So for example, uh, Public Works. Uh, Alex Ferrasati has been very successful over the years in bringing in grant, grant funding, uh, as well as some of other Robert's staff. Um, Community Services, Erica is very attentive to the grant writing process and has done that in her previous jurisdictions. Um, and I, uh, I grew up in the grant writing world. That's where I started in local government. Uh, and then also we're in the process of hiring the emergency services, emergency services manager. And and specific to that is to chase the uh, Cal OES monies that are available and other funding sources that are specifically related to emergency preparedness, wildfire preparation, disaster preparedness and so forth.
So given what you just said, it doesn't seem, in my opinion, that we would need to hire an additional employee to do this. We might be covered with the staff that we have.
That's correct. I, I think what we need to do is um, do an assessment of what grants we may not be um, already applying for. Um, and that's just done by looking at some of the funding sources at the state or private foundations and figure out where those needs are. Um, and then tap into it that way.
Okay. Um, okay, I definitely support number sixteen. I think that's something that is really important that we're not doing. And I'm glad that eighteen and nineteen will be part of the budget. See, I think there's one more and then I would support number twenty. And I just, I support the grant writing. I just, before we say we're going to hire a new employee, I want to know what we have, the skills we have in-house and how we can utilize them. And if that's something that you think we need later down the road, I would maybe if you could bring it up during the budget process, if it doesn't come forward tonight.
Okay.
Okay, is um, is that it for your remarks?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so it's my turn in this new order that we shifted and I'm going to pick up right where you left off on number fifteen, the grant rider. There's also the climate action plan funds available. Um, I don't know that you didn't touch on that. I'm assuming a consultant would help us find it because I've, I've been experiencing and and witnessing lost opportunities for getting grants. We don't even really know where the money is right now in in Sacramento. I, I feel like that. Um, right now, so if you're confident that all the bases will be covered, Kindon, then I would remove that too, but that hasn't been my experience recently that we're ready or even knowledgeable. Certainly not with climate action and certainly not with wildfire.
And and council, I think maybe with that one, perhaps then one way to revise that would say do an assessment of what grants are out there that we haven't been or should be applying for and then determine if that's it. In-house talent or if we hired somebody to fill that void.
I think that's a great idea, frankly. I, I would. But maybe it's not an employee, but maybe I don't know what it is. Um, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna move on. We can come back to that as a group maybe, but um, so going back to the top, number thirteen, I support setting up deferred maintenance account. Um, number sixteen and number seventeen. Um, I really see the role, that being the role of the chamber. Um, we have tried and we have talked about and we have set up committee, a task force to attract larger businesses and we really just haven't had the resources to do it. So I saw sixteen and seventeen as a chamber function and unfortunately we don't have a chamber operating right now. I'm glad to hear about um, the unfunded liabilities that are already being addressed. Thank you very much. Um, creating a general fund reserve policy. Well, I would normally support that. I think I did initially, but until I really know what the budget looks like and what we're paying off on the liability, but if the task force believes that we have the means to set up a reserve policy, I guess it's just a policy. I guess I'm on that one. Um, I think that's it for me. Um, Mayor Protem Shapiro.
Thank you. Uh, I'll just, I won't reiterate some of Peter's comments, but uh, as the task force, the two most important items for me on this list were thirteen and twenty. Uh, the establishment of the deferred maintenance account, I think is so important to our city going forward and looking not just a few years out, but many years out to protect us so we don't end up in situations that we might see elsewhere. Number twenty, creating a general for fund reserve policy. Number twenty, creating a general for fund reserve policy also is one of my strongest requests and and I think is important for our city and a number of basis for that, to always have sufficient wherewithal financially and to also help maintain our excellent credit rating going forward. I think those are two very important things. CalPERS unfunded liability and the OPED liabilities, while they are different items and there are some discussions we're having in our task force already about them, and we're going to continue as soon as we get additional information, will clearly be brought forward to council for discussion with our recommendation and obviously open ears to whatever everybody else is recommending. Number, let me scroll back up, sorry about that. Number fifteen, I am supportive in concept and I had the same question that was raised. I did discuss that briefly with Kendon. I I know there are staff members we've gotten. I can name all the measure, measure, the grant funds we've received and applied for, whether it be for the e-charging stations with environmental sustainability grants, the wildfire grants that are out there now. There are park grants out there in Sacramento just waiting for us. We talk about that in SCAG and the League of Cities on the committees I'm on. So if we have staff that really is competent to do this, great. If not, I would put it on Kendon or request that Kendon go ahead and do that analysis and then determine where we are short or where we might need, where we could improve in that regard and 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 determine hiring someone at that point for specific areas of grant writing. Overall, I am supportive of the concept, but I would like to put it back to Kendon and and get the evaluation. If that's, that's the way you're gonna tweak fifteen, I would support it with the caveat that it's after an analysis. And the only other one, which is sixteen, generally speaking, I'm for that. I I was supportive of having, we have an economic task force for our council now. But anything that would help attract business that we could do as as a city council is not necessarily our duty, but it's something that that benefits us all and benefits the community going forward. So yes, please put me on that one and I'm great. Thank you.
Okay, so now's the time to go back and revisit any decisions you've made and we'll go around, we'll start with Councilmember Weintraub.
I had, oh, I just wanted to comment on like the Chamber of Commerce and sixteen and seventeen. I think the chamber is a group that can support the city's effort, but I think it needs to be driven by the city. There's economic development plan that would be developed by the city and that the chamber and other groups can support. And since, you know, the chamber is a more fluid organization and, you know, as we're seeing now, I just think it's something that we have to take the lead on.
Okay, Councilmember Kraut.
Yeah, thank you. I I just wanted to jump in a little on item number fifteen. Hire an employee to seek right and administer grants. Little history on that. The city manager and I were in a presentation for the League of California Cities. It was, one of the presenters was from the city of Malibu. And what she emphasized was that getting the grant is, finding the grant is the first part of the problem. Writing and receiving the grant is the second part, and then administrating the grant is the third. And the big thing she said was that cities get in trouble for taking a grant and not documenting well how the money was spent. Because there's often an audit process at the end to make sure that the money that you receive from the grant was spent in the way it was supposed to be spent. So when we look at hiring an employee here, if we're going to really start pursuing a large number of grants, we're going to want to make sure we're handling them well once we receive them. Which is why I think we need a dedicated employee here. Also, if we had a dedicated employee that had this as their sole responsibility, then at any moment of free time, they would be looking for more grants and then filling out applications. Whereas when we use an individual from our public works and an individual from our communications and other departments, they might do this once because they're prompted to do so, and then they'll get busy with their other responsibilities. And I really believe that having a grant writer on staff that is just full-time searching for, applying for and administering this money, this will pay for itself. That's why I'm a really big supporter of this one.
Okay. I'll add to that discussion to a number fifteen. I, I think there's great value in having, whether it's someone on staff or a consultant do grant writing, especially with the amount of money state and federal that is out there. Kendon, do you wanna weigh in on what you, based on what you've heard? Because it does take a lot of time to do everything that Councilmember Kraut just described.
Yeah, that, that's correct. And I don't have anything to add. The only thing I wanted to clarify is a Mayor Pro Tem Shapiro on that item number fifteen. Did you want to add your support to that? I'm just looking at, trying to get the where we're at in identifying three to five here to send on.
Okay, we're referring to the, with the, there was a discussion about going ahead and seeing what current staff, and I I could, you already named three of them, what they can or can't do and potentially the new hire as well for emergency preparedness, what they can or can't do or have expertise in this area, and then determining, I was supportive of that. Absolutely.
And just for me, I support it as well, number fifteen.
And that was gonna be my next question, Mayor. So I think.
I just wasn't sure how, but I I, Councilmember Kraut is right. We need a singularly focused person who would have other job duties if they didn't have an immediate grant to manage or write or track. And maybe it's, you know, we have, we've, we've made a suggestion to have a lobbyist. Maybe it's a combined person who has their thumb on the pulse of Sacramento and Washington DC.
That's what I was gonna say.
Yeah, so I think that'll shake out, but yes, put me there. Or number fifteen. All right, any other, oh, okay, Councilmember Weintraub.
No, I just, that's what I meant to say before and I forgot. I was looking at my notes that I know we're discussing a lobbyist later and I know when things come up at the cog or some cities talk about where they learned of grant writing opportunity, grant opportunities, it's from their lobbyist. So I know there's two different things. It's one, like chasing the grant and then the other is writing the grant. So I just wanna make sure that we're not double dipping if we have staff that can write it. They just might not be able to go after it. I just, you know, we're talking about adding, you know, a lot of different people to our a lot of diff, we're talking about making a lot of changes, so I just wanna make sure we're being prudent in that, in that. So when we get to the lobbyist, we can talk about it further.
Well, to your point, and and I said this at the beginning of the process, it's the cost associated with some of these ideas as well. And hopefully, we'll have a better sense of of costs. When it finally comes back around to us, Kendon, both the cost for a cap, the cost to hire someone, the cap, the cost to make improvements on playgrounds and facilities, the Gore Hills, Calabasas Community Center, that would be helpful. Okay, last call for anything related to this item, public safety. I'm sorry, what was this? This was fiscal resilience. Okay, let's move on to the next one, which is.
Can we take a quick break?
Yes, yes.
It's been like two and a half hours. I just want to seven minutes.
Has it really? So it's nine twenty-two, is nine thirty-eight minutes okay for everyone?
Yeah.
Okay.
And Mayor, what we may want to do as well, and this would be at the discretion of the council, is review the public safety and emergency preparedness items. And then should the council want to, we can adjourn the, the rest of this until next week. That will give us halfway through three of the priorities and then we can come back at the next meeting and and continue. Because this is one of our longest ones, the emergency preparedness and public safety. So again, think that through the break and then we'll, we'll get your thoughts on that afterwards.
Good idea. All right, thank you. It's nine thirty.
Mayor, I think we have everybody back.
Okay, all right. So welcome back from the break and we're gonna start with our next priority, strategic priority. And that is public safety and emergency preparedness. And starting us off this round will be Councilmember Kraut.
All right, well, starting off with number twenty-one, which is to hire a consultant to advise on the development of a citywide fiber optic network. I'm still in favor of that, but don't put me down on this item just yet. I don't know if you saw the Super Bowl commercial, but there was a Verizon commercial where, you know, this spectrum was looking for their internet cable to be installed in the person's home and that's okay, they're going wireless. They have their home wireless network powered by Verizon now. That's kind of a hint up to what 5G is going to be. It's a disruptor that may end up taking up several people's home internet, ditching the, the cable and going wireless at home as well. So I think it's gonna change the whole fiber optic network for internet use. I think what's gonna happen is, as we get involved in number twenty-eight, which is the feasibility study regarding the stationing of cell towers on publicly owned sites to expand coverage areas. We're gonna find a lot of overlap between 5G and and home internet. So I'm just gonna support twenty-eight at this point and we'll see what comes of the the home internet as a result of supporting 5G in our neighborhoods. Moving on to my next one, I'd say let's go back to number twenty-four. I'd like to see us consolidate the alerts. Blackboard, Alert LA County, NICSOL, all of those. When an emergency happens in the city, I'm never sure which platform to go look at to get my alert. So I'd love to see those combined to a single place where our residents can know where to go in the event of an emergency. I also wanna support number twenty-five, developing a plan to address street racing concerns. We've been hearing that a lot. We do work for our constituents here and I think with the number of voices that we keep hearing on this topic, we'd we, we need to address it. We need to address it now. The next one I would support would be number thirty-two, provide an update to the city council on the development of evacuation zones. Myself, I'm very uninformed of of our plans and I'd love to see that well presented to the council so that I can have the confidence that we are prepared to handle those sort of emergencies. And then the last one that I would support would be number forty-two, develop expenditure plan for the Woolsey Firement Settlement Funds. And the last comment I threw out regarding number forty-two is, there's a lot of other great things in here in all of these items that we proposed, and I really believe that many of them will be funded when we do item number forty-two. So it's not that I don't think the other items are great ideas. It's not that I don't think they're important. It's that I think when we do number forty-two, that will enable us to do a whole lot more of the items that are above it. Those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up, Councilmember Weintraub.
Thank you. This one is gonna be my hardest to minimize down to a small number, because there's really like, this to me is where we need to place a lot of focus with all of the issues impacting our city. Let's see, hold on, I'm having a hard time. I don't see anyone, hold on one second, I just need to change my view. Okay, better. Let's see. So to start, I want SCE to figure out how to provide reliable electricity to our community. I think that's a basic right that residents in our city deserve to know that they're gonna have reliable power. Does it have to be a strategic priority or could that be something that staff just works with SCE on? And I guess Kendon, that's a question for you. Because we, I mean, it, it, this is up to SCE. We can't go out there and fix their equipment. But it has to be done.
That's correct. And and I think, Councilmember, you know, based on the questions that the council posed to the SCE representatives, our goal already as staff is to follow up with those and then follow up and follow up and follow up. And so a lot of that has to do with getting a timeline, getting dates, getting commitments from SCE on what they are planning to do. So again, we, we already have some direction from council from that meeting that we had, and so I think that ties in with that.
It has anyone from staff followed up with them since our council meeting?
We have not yet.
So like, how can we ensure that that would happen, that staff would? Because I don't wanna take this off and say, okay, members of our community, we're giving up on ensuring that you have reliable service from SCE. I'm gonna keep this down, even though I don't think that it's gonna be, I don't think I'm gonna get the three or five, but like, this has to be, I mean, it just can't continue to happen to certain segments of our community that they don't have reliable power. But I would ask that staff would follow up with them. I would like to support number twenty-four. And number twenty-five is one of my highest priorities, that and the working with SCE. The street racing concerns, they're growing by the day. And it's just, it's happening at all hours of the day and it's just a matter of time before someone gets hurt on our streets. Like, we have to do something. I know we've hired an additional motor deputy. We're gonna get the cameras up, but it's just, it's taking too long. Like, we're not doing enough to address this. The other issue that I think is so important facing our community is the break-ins that are occurring through the open space. We have to address that, whether it's through outreach, working with the sheriff. I know everyone's doing what they can and this happened a few years ago, but it just seems like every day we're hearing about another home in our community that's been targeted. I support number twenty-eight. Number thirty, I think we could do through the task force. So I think it's important, but we can handle that through a task force and then updates to the council. Provide an update to the city council on the development of evacuation zones. That's happening through the Office of Emergency Services through the county. Hopefully, they can come give us an update to the council. Because that's not really anything that we're gonna be involved in. I just wanna make sure that that information gets to my colleagues and to staff and that we're a part of that. But I think you've been attending those meetings or someone from staff has.
We, we have, Councilmember, we've been in contact with Office of Emergency Management and Zonheaven on, on the rollout of this.
Okay. Okay, can you go down so I can see the rest of the sheet? And I think that number forty-one has to do also with the open space and the break-ins. So working with the neighborhood watch, I think that's really important. I think those go together, so if there would be a way to combine those. It's just public safety and the issues happening countywide. People used to think Calabasas was a big bubble and it's like, it's not anymore. All of these issues of why people move to Calabasas, those issues are here now and we have to address them, make people aware. It used to be people would like, take classes on like self-defense, but now it's really, how do you protect your property? What do you do with like property facing open space? And we just have to really like, get out ahead of the problem. This happened in Hidden Hills a few years ago. They did a lot of things to address it and I think we just have to do that as well. Those would be my issues. Thank you.
Okay. I'll go next and I'll start by addressing number twenty-three, the Edison. I was really troubled to hear the problems that have continued to happen. And I, I did listen and heard Edison say that there were plans for repair work to be done. And I really would like to see some kind of simple one-page summary with a schedule, a timeline of what's going to happen and when so that we have it fresh and we can refer to it and we can hold them accountable. So I'm, I'm not supporting, I don't see what else we can do other than to assign staff to that and to hold them accountable once we have the accurate information. I support number twenty-four, but since we're talking about pushing out information in an emergency. I support number twenty-four, but since we're talking about pushing out information in an emergency and our different tools and looking at how they interface or duplicate. I also think we should be mindful about both the AM radio and the ham radio operators in our community who do the same thing and how they could possibly interface or, um, support our efforts and vice versa. So twenty-four, but I would like to see if it makes sense. Then maybe it's in parentheses, um, AM and ham radio uh, operations and how they interface during emergency events with our kind of communication efforts. You know, street racing concerns, I just have a comment about that. It's not one of my, I mean, it's a big issue, but I have to say that it's racing of motorcycles and now it's cars. It, it's always been a mission, an issue on Mulholland Highway. I've lived there off, just off Mulholland Highway. It's daily on the weekends. I think it was one of the number one issues I used to feel for, you know, it would come in sporadic. It would seem a group would promote driving and visiting and racing on the highway, and then it would be stopped and it would be quiet for a while, and then it comes back. I don't know what the tool is. Um, but I do think it's related to number, um, if you could look at number thirty-eight. Number thirty-eight is a review of our sheriff's services and consider opportunities to realign funding and services, and that is looking at what are the current problems? Um, not what, what were the current problems when we developed our contract, but what are they now? And I, and it's racing, it's open space um, break-ins, it's, it's different. And so I think that if we were to support thirty-eight, looking at services and how to realign our sheriff's services, it would be to prioritize street car racing and open space break-in. So I saw them linked. And then, um, uh, number twenty-eight I support, which is the feasibility study, uh, for cell towers. And number twenty-nine, um, I don't know how, what number, I don't know how many I have left. Twenty-nine was continuing to support the mental health needs of homelessness. I, I tried to track down two people that were arrested within our, our community for, um, breaking in a home and eating and someone on a bus grabbing someone's groceries, and I tried to track what happened to them. And once a crime is committed, if the Met team isn't there to assess them. Um, and, and regardless, it sounds like they go straight into the legal system. So I, I'm going, I think I mentioned to, um, do a ride along with the Met team. Um, I've, we've heard the the captain say that we have our own Met team here, which is great, but I just think, you know, I've heard them say they don't have the resources, so I want to keep looking at that. And then, um, thirty-seven, um, create more home hardening and outreach, um, for fire safe councils, fire safe councils are the conduit to get information out about any program we do, whether it's signing up for alerts, whether it's hardening your home, whether it's evacuation routes to know about, anything. These, this is the the point where information flows out in addition to the city. I think that's five or more, is that, is that true? If I have one more, it would be forty-two, um, the Woolsey Funds, and taking a look at that to fund some of these as well as someone else. Um, that is it for me, and then it will be, um, Mayor Protem Shapiro.
Thank you. This is, as was said before, tough one, this and the next one, I think I had seven or eight, so I'm paring it down while we speak. I agree with the comments, uh, issues of street racing. Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at the numbers here. I'll look up there. And issues of SCE are things that we should be dealing with. I'm not going to, while I support that, I'm not marking them as like, one of my five or less than five, but I think there are things that should be regularly watched over and, and dealt with by our staff, uh, our city manager and, and our city. And, and again, dealing with the sheriff. So I would say twenty-four would be one I would agree with, uh, and support that. To begin with, uh, twenty-eight would be the next one, which is combined. Yeah, cell towers and, and in addition to just cell towers getting better service, and again, for in a case of emergencies, in case of daily, I get daily complaints from individuals in our city, uh, as to cell service. So I think that is very important. We shouldn't have to wait for a Woolsey fire or an out-of-state tragedy at a school for that to, to become a priority. I think it's something we need to work on. And as far as number thirty-eight, I am supportive of that as well, although I'm going to end up with too many if I support that maybe, but, um, thirty-five is the one, I'm probably the only one at this point, I think, who's going to mark that one, but I think it's very important. I think whether it's earthquake or fire emergencies, and we are doing that as part of the emergency prepares, and this task force and the Public Safety Commission are doing things. But I think it's of the highest priority for our city to be prepared for the next earthquake, next fire, and to do everything we can to educate people how to get ready, how to put a ready, set, go sack, uh, in case they have to evacuate, things like that. Not telling them the evacuation route, because we will be advised as to that, but just getting people to think more about it rather than putting it in the back of their minds until such time as we have an emergency. And let's see, thirty-five, twenty-eight, twenty-four, I hope I got those. And then I had again, this is tough, forty-one, forty-two are very tough for me. I think as the budget committee, we can come forward hopefully with an item on the Woolsey, Woolsey Funds, but forty-one to me is really important, and he, in combining it, as Alicia mentioned earlier, is fine with me, but forty-one, uh, I think that was the one you talked about combining. I want to make sure I'm right. HOA's getting the neighborhood watch programs going in all areas of the city, not just the one area where it really works well. And, and, and adding another layer of safety and help and information to the sheriffs, uh, our sheriff's department is certainly working very hard, but anything we can do as a community to help avert and stop crime that is growing, growing, as we have, many of my colleagues have mentioned, uh, is important. The other items mentioned are a number of very important. Uh, I agree with twenty-nine. I think I've reached my limit, though, if I'm correct. Haven't I? Am I over my limit? But I do agree with Mayor Mauer. I think it's very important, uh, to support uh, the additional options and partnerships. There are a lot of outside partnerships and agencies that we can work with on that. And there are other items I will agree with, but I've overdone it already. These are all some really good ideas from all my colleagues. And you can't go wrong with any of them.
Thank you for that. Um, if I could just ask a quick question to Michael. Michael, do what, did I designate five? Because I saw one that I thought I did, it wasn't marked, but I just want to make sure. How many do I have?
I, I counted five. I'll go through them real quick.
Already? Okay.
Twenty-four, the twenty-eight, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, and forty-two.
So that's five. So I didn't get the mental health. Okay. Councilmember Bazagian, you're up.
Okay, um, this is a very important area for me, and I, there were a lot of items, so unfortunately, I was only able to pick five. I'll go through the, my comments. Um, on number twenty-three, I, I would not put that one because, um, I don't think we can control that. I mean, it just, you know, we can, we can't really require a response from Southern California. Yes, and we could ask for one, but they have a monopoly granted to them, and their, our choices are to use them or to come up with our own power company. So, um, I would not do that one. Number twenty-four, I would definitely do. So you can mark me for number twenty-four. Um, number twenty-eight, you can mark me for that. Um, number thirty-three. Let me see if I'm going over. No. So did you put me for number thirty-three? Yes, okay. Then, um, uh, number, number, I had a question on thirty-four and thirty-five. To me, I view those as very similar. Um, I mean, I guess, I guess I would combine them. But I, I mean, I guess you could put thirty, for me, thirty-five and put in parentheses in conjunction with thirty-four. But it doesn't look like thirty-four got any votes, so anyways, that's just a discussion item. But I would put thirty-five then. Um, number thirty-eight is one of my top priorities. I believe very strongly that we are going to need to review services because we've now been informed we can't increase our services. So all of these other things you guys are saying about how you want to increase, you know, uh, what, whatever it is, street racing or open space, uh, play, you know, open space trails that are used for break-ins. None of that can be done unless we either expend the money ourselves out of our own budget for private security, or we or we shift out other parts of the sheriff's contract, because we're not going to be able to increase the contract. So I think thirty-eight is a vital, uh, vital one. And that's, those were my five.
Councilmember Weintraub, you had your hand up?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to go back to thirty-four and, or thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five. As I was reviewing this list, I realized that when we hire an emergency manager, these are things that could be part of the ongoing job responsibilities. I mean, these would just be, these seem like tasks that they can do, and some of these were my ideas, but I realized that they weren't necessarily strategic priorities, but more things that our new, um, emergency manager would be able to do. So, um, Kindon, do you see other things on this list that would not necessarily be strategic priorities, but things that this new employee would do? Be working on, just as part of her, her, him or her, their day-to-day?
Yeah, thank you, council member. I think that's a, an important observation with those ones. Uh, thirty-seven could fall under.
Three, like that person could do twenty-three. You know, that could be the person staying on top of SCE. Hmm, because just because we don't get to five, like, I don't want these to fall off the radar. Like, these seem like all of these are so important that this new employee could take, take up as part of their job.
And that's correct. And I think thirty-seven falls under that with the home hardening outreach, working with the fire safe councils would fall under that emergency services manager position. You mentioned thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five. Uh, thirty-two falls under that with the evacuation zones. That's working with the um, Zone Haven and the Office of Emergency Management on that.
Can you go to thirty-seven? You mentioned that about home hardening. Yes, I agree that the new staff person could help coordinate home hardening outreach, but it says consider supporting additional fire safe councils, which I, I thought that would also be like providing them with seed money like we did our first one. So it may be different, but I guess they would have a budget. They could do that. I, I mean.
No, you, you're correct, Mayor. So I think the first part, the, the home hardening and outreach, uh, programs. Uh, if we were to separate just, you know, funding additional fire safe councils, we could, um, we could say that part of thirty-seven would fall under the duties of the emergency manager, supporting additional fire safe councils or funding those would be a separate one.
Even number forty-one, like I look at the work that Matlet Susan does in Malibu, and she's doing so much of this as part of her day-to-day job. So I hope that when we bring on this new employee, they're able to see that these are our priorities under this, these are our priorities for public safety and that this person could, you know, run with some of these.
So Alicia, do you want, knowing that these were, would be in a duty statement for someone to do, do you want to shift any of your priority votes to?
Well, I just wanted to know if Kindon agreed with that.
I do. Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I think, can you just go up to the top? Um, no, I think I, I think I'm good. Um, no, I still want the street racing. But I agree, you know what? Okay, if this new employee can do the SCE one, I'll add, um, my support to the sheriff's contract, which I agree is super important. I was just looking at it, um, a different way. But as long as the SCE doesn't fall through the cracks, because that's so crucial.
Michael, um, well, I'm sorry, Councilmember Kraut, you have your hand up, but I was just going to look real quick to see if we have five of the consensus there.
But even twenty-four, it's not really a strategic priority. It's something that staff can just do.
But unless we really make it a priority, it might not get done as quickly as we'd want.
But I feel like, don't you think we can work on some of the bigger things? Like twenty-four shouldn't be.
I think number twenty-four is a big one.
I, I think alerting the public how we do it, because.
Oh, no, no, I agree. It's so important, but to me, it should be done. Like, that's just where I get frustrated because yeah.
I, I think the difference with that one, council members, the consolidating part is that it, that we have those, um, notification processes in place, and we can use each one separately. I think what Peter is saying is, how do we create some type of single source of people have nowhere to go in the community? So they're not waiting on Twitter or Blackboard or whatever to NICSOL. Uh, they have a place to go that those all feed into.
Right. No, and all I was saying is that's not anything that like the council can really be a part of. That has to be staff-driven, working with the other agencies. I'm not taking my support away from it. I just.
I think, though, when staff has a finite amount of time and resources in a year, the work plan helps prioritize for them by keeping it. Um, it tells staff that this is one of your top work projects this year, and it's, it's a big undertaking to really kind of take a fresh look at that. Um, Councilmember Shapiro, did you want to chime in?
Just real quick, because I'm looking at this now, and I, the number forty-one, I thought Councilmember Weintraub had indicated was a coordination with the open space and theft, or am I, are I wrong on that?
No, correct.
It's not showing that on number forty-one, and it only shows me, I believe, as supporting it.
Right, I want.
Excuse me, I'll, I'll adjust that.
Okay, thanks, Michael.
Thank you, Michael.
So Councilmember Shapiro, it looks like you, you, um, supported the, we were combining forty-one with thirty-eight. And it looks like you supported both, so shall I remove this item forty-one and place it to another?
I think.
Go ahead.
No, we were talking about supporting with the open space and the break-ins. The outreach. What number was that?
You, you wanted to combine forty-one with twenty, excuse me, twenty-seven, which is hidden.
Yeah, it, that's the that's what I was saying, is that?
Whichever you want to combine it with. If you want to combine it with, uh, thirty-eight, I'm fine with that. I'm already supporting that.
I would combine twenty-seven and forty-one.
Correct.
And then, Michael, can you tell us where we're at with naming five here? How close we are or what we?
Sure, yeah. I'm trying to hide the, the zeros, so that visually you can, um, see them. So any now, so you have, uh, two fives, one four, there's, sorry?
Can you shrink it a little now?
Uh, sure.
Just so we could.
I can also just get rid of the ones, if that's okay.
Just a little, yeah. Just a little, yeah.
So these are the ones that have more than two.
But because you've removed all the ones, I was about to re, to change my one to one of these other two priorities here.
Okay, I, I apologize. I'll, uh.
You can hit the undo button there.
Sure. Bring them back.
Can I just say something? Um, Mary Sue, while we're waiting?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I've lived, uh, backing up to Mulholland Highway for a really long time, and I can personally say. That the street racing concerns have never been like they are now. In, in all my time living in Calabasas, and this is something shared by not only people that live in my community, but residents all along Mulholland Highway. And the Bird Streets, and I've heard from people at Parkway, Calabasas, off Los Virginas, but I can personally speak to that this is.
Yeah, I, I, I believe you. I hear these crazy. That, from where I live, which isn't even close. So I, I believe, I just don't know what is the measurement that it's being improved? What are we going to do? This one seems out of our control.
I think.
Unless, unless we look at our sheriff's contract and we say, hey, let's move this money over here and get another motorcycle officer.
And I think the cameras will help.
The cameras are, yeah, after the, I'm, yeah, that's a pilot right now, right? I'd like to see that, too. Just, I, I need to see that there's. It's been a, it's been, it's a pilot right now. I'd like to see how it, um.
Yeah.
What, what kind of results there are. Are they up and running now?
No.
Oh, okay. Councilmember, uh, Kraut, did you want to say something, too?
I, I do. I'd like to take my, uh, supportive item number thirty-two and instead support item number thirty-five with my colleagues. It seems very similar in nature and more aligned with what, uh. The rest of you are, are, are suggesting, and I, I like that idea.
Sorry, councilmember Kraut, I was number thirty-five.
Remove thirty-two and add me to thirty-five.
You know, um, if. I would add home hardening to that. I would. Add part of thirty-seven to thirty-five, and I'd move mine up there, too. That's kind of what Epic does. Epic does. It bundles all these. Disasters, earthquake, fire.
So, um, council, um, Madam Mayor, um, are we also moving up the fire safe councils into thirty-five?
You know.
In addition to the home hardening?
Like, I seem to be alone as far as fire safe councils, but I will say one more thing about fire safe councils. With all this money, and there was a, a committee, a budget committee hearing today in Sacramento where I was listening to the wildfire money. And the fuel reduction. There is so much money, and fire safe councils are eligible for these, for those monies. So it's not just the city getting a grant and, and, and doing what it can. It's, if we have these in all. Different areas of the city, they could independently. Um, and that's what they're saying. That's what all the experts are saying. These fires can't be stopped. There's, you know, with fuel reduction around your homes and hardening your homes, homes which are the new fuel for these crazy wildfires. We're seeing neighborhoods just annihilated because it goes from house to house to house. If they were home hardened, it, it may, that's what they're advocating. That's our preventative measure, according to all the fire experts. And fire safe councils have the money then to do that, so. If not this time, I don't, I mean. I can't think of a more important thing to add to the list if we're not at five, or even if we are.
That was a good pitch.
You know, um, I will send you all this amazing article that is historic on all the different. Firefighting management programs that have been since, you know, the early thirties to present. These things are rolling over communities, and it's like. We have to prepare our communities.
Well.
Did you want to say something? Count, Mayor Pretend Shapiro?
Just briefly back to, uh, a separate one, twenty-seven, to ask Michael if he would add the HOA outreach as well, Neighborhood Watch. I thought that was combined. Correct. Thank you.
Um, councilmember Weintraub, could you?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure. Are the street racing concerns, can we put that in like parentheses with thirty-eight, that that's something that we want to talk about?
Um, I would say, definitely say, and to realign funding and services for programs such as street racing and. Open space break-ins or something.
Yeah, if we could do that, that would be great, and. I liked the way you spoke of thirty-seven. I. Definitely see it as a priority. Um. No, I, I, I really appreciated the way you communicated that one. So I would. If I'm getting rid of twenty-five, I would. Um, put.
I want, I would put mine back on thirty-seven, too. I, I, I absorb, I don't know where it went, but.
But I also want to know, could our new employee? You know, help with that, like?
Yes, but, and, but, and that's all it takes is a little, um, a little push start, because these are. Community-run. The city doesn't run them. They're run by volunteers, like Brian Cameron said, Epic. Twenty volunteers are running that. They're writing their own grants. They're coming up with their own home hardening training program. But they can't do the whole city.
No, I got, they were great. They came out. I got my evaluation. I have my to-do list of things that need to be done to my house. It was a great. A great resource. And I also think that, um. Okay, so no, you can add me to that one.
And you can add me back to that one, too. I, I'm not to thirty-seven. And, um, City Manager, Miki, you had a, your hand up?
Uh, yes, Mayor, I was just, um, looking at, uh, and if we're trying to get to just one more, we have. We have items number twenty-five, twenty-seven, and forty-two. They each have two votes. So if we're trying to just get to one more, uh, I think let's focus on those unless there's some other things that we need to discuss. But, uh, specifically with number twenty-five, I think the plan is, um. Uh, i- it's not just law enforcement, but I think this is, you know, thinking a little bit, uh, differently, too, of. Infrastructure, would there be roundabouts or cobblestone or, or whatever it is? And these are just wild ideas, but are there things that would drastically reduce street racing? But would be put in a plan and then be explored, um, by staff? Again, we're not saying that we're going to build a roundabout or put in cobblestone, but are those effective measures in reducing street racing? That could be presented to the council for further discussion?
Councilmember Weintraub?
I mean, this is a priority of mine. I don't. Care where it falls, um, on this spreadsheet. So if it's thirty-eight or twenty-five, but. For all the residents in our, if, in our community who are impacted by this on a nightly basis, I think we owe it to them to explore whatever we have to do. So I don't care what number it's under. I just think it's really important, as all of these things are. But this is just continuing. I mean. All throughout the city, you're hearing about it now, not just along Mulholland Highway or Parkway, just everywhere.
Councilmember, um, Kraut?
Yes, uh, Mayor Mauer, I suggest maybe at this point, we. We could rewrite these so that every one of these items is included and we're down to five. Um, and I know that's taking the easy way out here, but. We talk about the street racing concerns is really going to be at least involved in the discussion when we do number thirty-eight. And I would say that, uh. If we're looking at, uh, the sites that generators can be used for charging stations during emergencies is bound to come up in the discussion. When we develop a city readiness and evac, eh, education initiative for earthquake and fire emergencies. I mean, all of these things have such overlap. Um. It might be worthwhile to, to see if staff can. Find a way to have these come into the conversation. I don't know that they'll all get resolved. And I just want to remind everybody, one of the things that I said when I finished my items. Number forty-two, we have the Woolsey Fire Settlement Funds, um, and. Those don't have any specific place that they need to be allocated, so if we don't choose a place to spend them in these, uh. Emergency preparedness items, uh, they fall under the general fund and they can be spent anywhere. Um, and I know a number of things we looked at in fiscal resiliency. We, we wonder why was this money not set aside before, or was this set aside before and then forgotten about? And I don't want to see the Woolsey Fire Settlement Funds fall into that category, so I, I think there's got to be a better way to combine a lot of these.
Okay, um, council, uh, Mayor Pretend Shapiro, but one moment, please, back staff. Um, I think Alicia and I want thirty-seven. Um. But.
So, happy to do that, Madam Mayor.
And then, James, I wanted to ask you very quickly if you have this one here at the generators. Did you want to do something with, else with that, and in this, this?
Yeah, Mayor, I was gonna bring that up. I think, James, you have the magic token right there. Like to move that to one of the ones that has.
Yes, he could.
Two. That puts us at the five very quickly.
Okay. Uh. Well, you, you're done with twenty-seven and twenty-five, right?
Yes, well.
Well, twenty-seven. There are twos.
No, I mean, but those are going into thirty-eight. I see it down in thirty-eight now.
Yeah.
That, the only thing missing was the HOA Neighborhood Watch from that, and then Alicia and my vote could move from there.
So I would then take. I would go to thirty-seven. Why isn't thirty-three with thirty-four and thirty-five then, if you're, if you're?
That goes to what Peter was saying, that we easily could.
Yeah.
Get these combined. I think that's a good idea.
Move thirty-three to thirty-five and move my vote to thirty-seven, that's fine.
And as David said, thirty-eight, if you add the, somehow we have to add the Neighborhood Watch.
In fact, I, I accidentally skipped over, um, Mayor Pretend Shapiro. Go ahead, please, sorry.
Thanks, that was my only comment. You moved the, uh, street racing and open space, but not the HOA Neighborhood Watch down to thirty-eight. And then, uh, councilmember Weintraub and my vote, which would probably further mess things up, would be to add to number forty-two. I would move to develop, expanded since I originally brought this up, and I've been harping on it, so I might, I better support.
You better put yourself there.
And then I'd come off twenty-seven. You can race twenty-seven.
Okay, so what happened to the fire safe council that got left behind? I thought they were being merged.
Well, no, I, I put my vote there, and then.
We can add fire safe council at thirty-five if you'd like.
Oh, so, yeah, James put his vote on thirty-seven.
Yeah, so, Michael, I think we can take, uh, uh, councilmember Bizagin's vote from number thirty-three and move it to thirty-seven.
Darn it. Um. Peter and Alicia, we've moved. Oh, okay, so, so Kindon had a, an opinion. Oh, count, uh, Mayor Pretend, um, did you have another comment?
Sorry, no, I was just gonna say, if you, if you combined, as you had asked earlier, thirty-seven with thirty-five, then that would solve the problem. I think for all, that would give us five.
Okay, councilmember Kraut?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, let's combine thirty-five and thirty-seven. Because Mayor Mauer and Councilmember Weintraub have six items marked up there already.
Who's counting?
I am, very carefully. If we combine thirty-five and thirty-seven, we're done.
Except it, um, it was, thirty-five is, is information. It's education information. Thirty-seven is that also, but it includes supporting additional fire safe councils, which I guess we could do what, if, if it came up. So I'm ha, I'm fine with that.
And sorry, not to harp on this, but when we're reviewing the, um. LA sheriffs, wh- when we're reviewing the sheriff's services and opportunities to realign funding and services. Does that mean then we're not able to talk about some of the ideas that Kindon brought up with street racing? Ways that we could, you know, slow things down on our own? Or are we giving, like, Kindon the direction that he can still explore that?
Um, Kindon, do you want us to respond to that? You're muted.
Have good ideas on this subject.
I, I don't know if I have a response right now, um.
You know, I, I was thinking that, um, some solutions might come up in our discussions with the sheriff that we could then. Explore further. Relate, not related to sheriff resources, but related to new practices to slow drivers down.
Kindon had some outside-the-box ideas when we've spoken about this, and residents, um, emails have landed to him. So. I just want to make sure that he could still. Explore those, because now we've kind of. Moved this, talking about like contract services, something a little different.
I would think so. Um, Kindon, this is something, is a problem in the community, a serious problem, and. We don't, just because it's not on our work plan, if it's health and safety especially. Um, I think.
Councilmember Weintraub, maybe what we do is, uh, address this in the, um, Public Safety Task Force. And then explore some ideas that might partner with some of the other commissions with a recommendation to the city council. That might be another way to address that.
And just because, you know how much I love all the, I really think you've come up with some good ideas that could be like staff-executed. That they don't even necessarily need to go through commission and back to council. Like, this is such a huge priority. I'm like saying it here, I'm worried that someone is going to be killed on our city streets. The racing is out of hand. It just, it can't be ignored, and I don't want it to go through committee and committee. You have such good ideas. Let's, through our public work staff, through someone, let's just try to execute that.
And, and council, maybe one idea is, uh, a way to compromise, uh, or find a solution under fiscal resiliency. I think we only have four, uh, that we identified. If the council would like to add street racing here, so it stays on as a priority. Then we still are. We still are kind of within that number for those first three categories that we've looked at.
That sounds great to me. Um, I know, uh, councilmember Kraut, you had your hand up. That just was waiting.
Michael, add a column where I get a vote now, and so then.
Go ahead, councilmember Kraut.
Thank you. I, I, I was just going back to the point that there's still six boxes checked under, uh, council. Uh, member Weintraub and, and Mayor Mauer's column, so. Either we're combining something or somebody needs to remove an X.
I think, uh, the street racing concerns was folded into, um, thirty-eight, so twenty-five was folded into thirty-eight. I'd be happy to remove.
And that's going under fiscal, it's gonna go under fiscal resiliency, even though it's not that subject matter?
No, it'll stay here. It, they'll just have four, right? Can?
So, wha- what I was suggesting, it wouldn't go under fiscal resiliency. It would just mean we have extra, we have, we didn't come up with five under fiscal resiliency. So if, if the council wanted to have six under this category, we could do that.
This is fine. Let's just, let's just do it.
Okay, so, um, just housekeeping thirty-seven, the Xs for, um, councilmember Weintraub and I should come off because they, it has been merged above. Does that?
Yeah, I think that.
Out with our, our bean counter?
I don't think it helps mine.
One from James, I think, from thirty-seven.
Okay, last comments on this. I think we are there. One, two, three, four, five.
And then Alicia, I think you still have. And then Alicia, I think you still have, um, six of those different categories.
Six, well, yeah, six.
Well.
Except I don't have, we don't have extra votes for six. We only got five votes, so it's kind of hard to push it up, but I think there's consensus.
These are also important.
Address number twenty-five. Would, is there any objections to including number twenty-five, which only has two, because we've run out of votes? Okay. All right, so, um, this is, it's now almost ten-thirty. Uh, we can continue with the last remaining, or we can, um, I mean, we can continue tonight, or we can continue next Wednesday. What are, what are the wishes of the council?
We're only halfway done, and next Wednesday we have a full set of items, so I would.
No, it's not a full set of items.
Well, it is. I mean, we got our liaisons, we got other things on there that we didn't have tonight, so.
Well, I know, but it's still a short meeting. Um, and we got through
half.
We only have two left, right?
Three.
Three, well.
And Mayor, maybe what I'd suggest is maybe we remove the item on the liaisons and then, um.
Yes.
Do this a discussion next week.
We can do that, and we may add a closed session as well, by the way.
Okay.
All right, so is it the wishes of this council to, um, continue this discussion for next Wednesday?
Yeah, the only thing is, as long as all this is happening, I want to move my vote from thirty-seven to thirty-three, because that's really what I wanted in the first place. I know it's a losing thing, but I, you know, I was supposedly moving it to help somebody.
Maybe Peter, maybe Peter or someone can find a place to move that, to get it done.
Which one?
It's done.
The generators, no.
Oh, yeah, you know what, um, James, we did, well, with Clean Power Alliance, they were wanting to put, and by the way, when you say generators, I hope you mean solar-powered and not diesel-powered, because diesel-powered are just.
Why, it, it didn't say. I'm just, I'm just looking.
This was my item.
But, um, yeah, anyway, we, it's tough to find those, those places. So, all right. Um, are there any future agenda or information items for the upcoming meeting?
No, just real quick, and I'm being serious, actually, could thirty-three somehow go with number thirty-five?
Yeah, I asked for that before. I didn't get an answer.
Because I think it is really important when we do have these fire and earthquake emergencies, where people go, where, what they.
So here's my two cents. Thirty-five is an educational and and program-related. Number thirty, the generators, and Kindon, you can chime in here. I mean, it took, it is more of a public works project, really, where you have to go to the facilities, measure. It's, it's a pretty complicated process. It's doable, but it's not related to education.
Um, so looking at number thirty-three, um, I, I think there's different things that could fall under there. You're right, Mayor, the, if you're, if we're talking just about generators, that's finding space for those, uh, especially if it's solar generators and then the backup batteries and, um, and equipment there. Uh, there could be, you know, other ways to look at that with, uh, battery devices or storage devices. Uh, let me think of that one a little bit more, if we can roll that in.
Okay.
Perhaps we can roll it in development and infrastructure as well, since that's a smaller list.
There you go. Let's, let's, um, I think that's a good idea. Maybe we could pick up with that over there. Councilmember Buzajin, what do you think? Moving that to infrastructure definitely is infrastructure.
Okay.
Okay. All right, any other comments about what we've discussed this evening? If not, are there um, any future agenda items for an upcoming meeting, anybody?
We have about eighty future agenda items. We've been talking about them all night.
Good point.
Okay, all right, then we will adjourn. Are we adjourning or are we contin, continuing, Matt? What are we doing here?
The meeting is being adjourned and the item is continued to next time.
Okay, there you go. All right, thank you, everybody, and thank you to the public. I'm sorry we didn't get to all of your items. Please come back next Wednesday, um, and, uh, we'll discuss them. Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Thanks, Tom. Good night.
Good night.